Hello.
Hello, Hi, what's up? There's a big echo.
Sounded like Jimi Hendrix there for a quick tally. Hi, do you know who Jimi Hendrix is?
What? He had to play the guitar.
What's that?
I told, I taught him how to play the guitar.
You did, okay. You were five years old, huh? So proud of you.
He died, he died of a very rare form of cancer, I think, didn't he?
Oh, Jimi Hendrix?
He died of alcohol poisoning.
Alcohol poisoning?
He died of OD, yeah. He was part of the good club of Janis Joplin, Jim Morrison, and there was one other. They all died at 27, and they all died of drug abuse. True role, true role models for the youth of America.
Well, when you compare them to some people who have achieved great prominence in this country, they weren't as bad as some of them, I don't think. I don't know. I don't care. By the way, they became role models because the press and the entertainment industry promoted them, so they were just as complicit as they were.
Mm-hmm. That is true.
Um, we are, the video is live. I think we're just waiting for Mr. Jackson to get back, and Mr. France Baum is also, um, logging on at the moment. Oh, Mr. Jackson is here, okay, thank you.
Hi, it's Time Table. So Mr. Raisik is also logged in as me on another computer. I'm not sure why, but you see two times Time Table.
Okay, got it, thank you. Um, I think Mr. Renner may have a conflict with both applications, and now that we have enough other board members, we may not need him to stay.
But I'm not sure I can stay for the second one.
What would be my conflict? What's my conflict?
Uh, I believe Mr. Penzer was-
Oh, Mr. Penzer's there. I didn't realize.
I thought he was on both, yeah.
Oh, that's awesome.
Mr. Doyle is doing the first one. I'm co-counsel.
Oh. Uh, so you're, you're representing both applicants tonight?
I think so, yeah.
Okay, perfect.
The first one, uh, the first one maybe not, depending on what John Doyle, is John on?
On. Privilege to have you with me.
Hi, John.
Okay, awesome. Good night, everyone.
Good night, Ally.
Good night, John.
Good night, John. Boy, who remembers that?
I remember that.
Good night, Cory, Ellen. Good night, Mama.
Good night, Chip.
Good night, Mr. Talabash Roy, who you named.
That's what I was thinking.
Hey, John, I'd like your office.
Okay, Ally, we ready to go?
This is my home on-
Ally? Ally? Ms. Morris, John, do we know what we're waiting for?
I can't hear Ally. She must, she has herself muted, that's why. She's-
Oh, okay. Are we waiting for something, John?
Well, let's wait for Ally to, uh, get finished with whatever thing she's administering.
Ron, I thought you wanted me to call you today, Penzer.
So?
Didn't you want me to call you when it goes on?
As I spoke to Ally, and she is gonna, evidently, John Doyle says he may, he may take up the entire evening, so, uh, Ally says they're gonna end the meeting at 9:30, so she's gonna call me at 8:30 to tell me whether or not, uh, we're gonna get reached or not.
Okay. I'm gonna, if we get to finish this, then I'm not gonna have to call you. Ally's gonna call you?
I understand that.
Okay, if you want, I won't hold on to it anymore.
I'm having a hard time hearing you, Abe.
I got it. I had to mute Mr. Jackson. Um, I believe we can start. Chairman, uh, I'm sorry, the chairman's not here tonight, and Mr. Renner has left, correct? I don't see him on here.
He left. He left.
Okay, thank you. Um, Mr. Stern has been asked to step in as chair tonight. Um, he's on via phone right now. He graciously offered to help us even though he's actually on vacation and was celebrating his anniversary today.
Happy anniversary.
Thank you, Abe.
Are, are we gonna have a quorum for the second case?
Yes.
Are we gonna have a quorum what?
Will we have a quorum for the second case?
Yes.
Okay, fine.
We're not going anywhere.
Um, we can start the meeting. I will read the certification of compliance to start. The time, date, and location of this meeting was published in the Asbury Park Press and the Star Ledger and posted on the Bolton Board in the Office of the Township of Lakewood at least 48 hours in advance. The public has the right to attend this meeting. A reasonable comprehensive status of this meeting will be upheld for public inspection. This meets the criteria of the Open Public Meeting Act. Um, before I take a roll call, let's rise to salute the flag, please.
Hello?
Hi.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, all for God, individual, with liberty, justice, and freedom of speech. And I will take a roll call.
Ally, will we read the certifications?
Yes, I did, thank you. Um, roll call, Mr. Garfield.
Yes.
Does that move what?
Mr. Stern.
Yes.
Hey, uh-
Mr.-
Team, if, if you're, if you're not speaking, please mute yourself. Abe, if you can mute yourself.
I got him. Thank you. Mr. Sable.
Here.
Mr. Flansbaum. We're, we're unmuting him at the same time, I'm sorry.
Yeah, here, yeah, here.
Thank you. Mr. Herzl, Mr. Renner, Mr. Isaacson, Mr. Meyer.
Here.
And Mr. Raisik.
Here.
That's six members, thank you. Um, we don't have any resolutions tonight, so we're gonna move right on into public hearing. I don't have any changes to the agenda, which means we're going to start with SP 2374 for congregation-
Excuse me, Chairman?
Yes.
Would you like to swear me in first?
Sorry, Terry.
Yeah, we'll get to that. All right, Ally, you wanna finish reading the, uh, case?
SP 2374 for congregation Toldas Yakov Yosef. It's a major site plan for a school on Squankum Road.
Mr., uh, vote, please raise your right hand to swear affirm testimony before this court. This is the whole truth, not but truth.
Yes.
The record will reflect the board engineering plan that's sworn in. Um, Mr. Stern, uh, you're, uh, chairing this meeting. You're-
Yes.
Okay, um, do you want, or wants to start in customary way by going through his review letter?
I think that would be an excellent idea, counsel.
Excuse me, Mr. Jackson, probably now that Ally's gonna call me at 8:30 to know whether or not, uh, Mr. Doyle will have completed his case or not. Because I'll get off now then, rather than sit here. Okay?
But I think, I think, I mean, Ally, do you have counsel's phone number? His cellphone number?
He gave me his cellphone number, and if and when we are able to start the application for Somerset Walk, I can give him a call.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and then Ally, if you can text him along the way if it's not looking good or not.
Okay.
All right, and Mr.-
Thank you for the courtesy.
Mr. Stern, um, before we, uh, do Mr. Vogt's letter, uh, there's a preliminary matter that we should address. Uh, the, uh, we, we received a, a letter from an objector's attorney, uh, Mr. Liston, indicating, um, a series of objections to format the notice, et cetera. And, uh, in this COVID environment, uh, the planning board, in order to move the wheels of progress forward and fulfill its, uh, responsibility to consider land use matters in a timely manner, has done its best, uh, to forth a, a process and a procedure where we can hear applications. Uh, we, we have been doing this, um, for, for some months now, and we've heard numerous applications. And, um, I note that there are many nearby municipalities, which I will not list, that have, uh, similarly adopted a virtual format. Um, in, in our format, we, we provide interested persons with the opportunity to submit written comments prior to the meeting and, and during the meeting, and also to ask questions of, uh, the, the applicant's professionals and the board professionals. Uh, this has worked, uh, very well, and we've had many instances where people will email questions during the meeting of the, uh, experts and, and a series of questions, even after it's been, uh, the answers have been provided. So, in, in, in our view, we believe that this, uh, protects the interests of, of those who are concerned, gives people an opportunity to be heard, and allows the board to consider, uh, whatever objections. Uh, in this particular instance, uh, Mr. Liston raises an objection about whether interested parties can cross-examine. Um, we, um, believe, or, or I believe, it's my opinion, that, well, this might be, uh, a concern of some third party if they raise it. Mr. Liston has been given the opportunity to have an open microphone and participate in the same manner and in the same quality that the applicant's attorney can participate, uh, where he would have an opportunity to cross-examine witnesses and make whatever statements he wants. And in fact, he, he, you know, provided an 11-page letter, I believe it was, that gives very specific details, uh, regarding what his objections are. So, my, my recommendation to the board is that we proceed, uh, in this COVID environment in order to protect the safety of the public, um, and, and, you know, everyone in the state, we, we, we just can't congregate in person at this time, um, due to the national emergency, the worldwide emergency, actually. And, um, you know, under the circumstances, we believe that this is the best that we can do, and my recommendation to the board is that we proceed. Um, you know, I, I think since the objection's been raised, the, the board should consider that at this time, whether you wanna go forward as a threshold matter, and, um, if, if Mr. Doyle has anything he'd like to add, um, I, I would invite him to, uh, comment on the letter or, or the procedure right now.
I would.
Okay, so Mr. Doyle, if you, Mr. Doyle, if you could go quickly, comment on the letter, and then I'm gonna kinda rule, and then we're gonna move on. So please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would agree with, uh, Mr. Jackson's belief in ruling, and, and hopefully would, the board would support that. Uh, I've spoken to Mr. Liston several times. I, uh, made it clear that it was my understanding, as Mr. Jackson has said, that he had the opportunity, as much as I did, to call witness, to cross-examine my witnesses, to be fully participating and able to do so in this setting. With respect to this setting, I note that the board has tried diligently to move all of the, uh, non-controversial matters first, so we were set back. This application is deemed complete and able to be heard on May 6th, and we have patiently waited and in fact adjourned the meeting for an additional week so as to see if we could resolve certain matters raised by objectors. Not having done that and wanting to express our ability to go forward on an application that we believe is much needed, educational, and, and suits the site and the municipality, uh, we would like to go forward, and I would hope the board would allow us to do that tonight.
So, Mr. Doyle, I'm hearing you, uh, not objecting at all to the objectors' counsel cross-examining your witness. Am I hearing correctly?
I, I, I would not object if he was on the call and, and wished to do that, subject to the relevance and, uh, nature of the cross-examination, but it is a right under the municipal land use law, and I think that the procedure being used tonight is consistent with municipal land use law.
Okay, so to me, that, that, the, the essence of due process is the right to cross-examine. So, it is, appears to me we are giving the objectors and their counsel the right, subject to rules of relevance and whatnot, but the full right to cross-examine the applicant's witnesses. And that's, that's the most important thing, and we are providing for that. So we're gonna move on tonight, and if the objectors disagree, then they can go to the courts and let the courts, um, decide whether we're right or wrong, but we're moving forward tonight.
Thank you.
All right, Chairman, should I start the review?
Yes, Mr. Boyd, please do so.
Thank you. Uh, I'm reading from my August 10th letter, beginning at the top of page 3 under submission waivers. They include topo, contours, man-made features within 200 feet, as well as the EIS. Uh, we support all these waivers for hearing purposes, uh, for reasons stated in the letter.
Um, I've got a letter dated May 6th. Is there an, an updated letter?
Yes, there is. Uh, there's actually two. The most recent is August 10th.
Okay, uh, why don't you proceed, and I'll keep looking for it. I'm sure it's here.
All right, so the board has to act upon the waivers, Chairman.
Are we sure we got out the August 6th letter? I have, I have two of-
August 10th.
I have two of May 6th.
I have one, August 11th for Somerset Walk, and I have May 6th for congregation Toldas Yakov.
I'm going to assume that the plans were sent to the board members before this August 10th letter was completed, so that may not have been included when plans were mailed to the board members. However, the August 10th letter is available in a digital online drive available to the public, and the board, should they be interested in opening it?
Chairman, if I can ask-
Ready.
Time table. If I can ask for a few minutes to review this, uh, uh, letter, I mean, four, five minutes, the updated letter.
Okay, why don't we do that? Ally, can I trouble you to email it to me?
Of course.
No, I, I'm not gonna be able to get-
Yes, and I will, for the board, that Mr. Liston has, has joined the meeting, it's available here as well. I don't know if Mr. Jackson wants to let Mr. Liston know that we did already discuss and agree to hear the application tonight under this format.
Uh, you know, Mr. Liston has joined. It's the applicant's portion of the case. Uh, the meeting's underway, so, um, we should proceed.
Okay, so Ally, you're emailing this?
Yep.
Okay. You're sending it to my Red River email?
Yes, I just sent it to everyone on this, uh, meeting invitation, so all of your emails should have it.
Okay, let me pull that up. So Terry, in the int-, well, actually, you wanna have a few minutes to look at it, so. Are there a lot of changes, Terry, from your May 6th one? That sounds like a long time.
The applicant's professionals, uh, have, have made efforts to basically address a lot of our original technical comments, uh, and get the plans far enough along that the board would be comfortable hearing them. Uh, in, in terms of concept, I, I, I don't think there's anything drastic. Uh, I think it's more fine-tuning the preliminary submission.
Okay, good. All right, so mine just came through. Um, it is now 6:20. Um, board members, you have five minutes. 6:25, we're gonna reengage.
Um, and I believe that is it under variance relief. Continuing on under design waivers, uh, section 3, page 4 of our review. A partial design waiver is required from providing curb and sidewalk along the entire front of the site. Uh, it appears that, uh, the portion of the site where, uh, curb and sidewalk are not proposed, uh, are because of existing freshwater wetlands. Uh, and then finally, comment 2, uh, partial design waivers required from providing street trees, uh, as well as shade tree, shade tree, and utility easement across the entire front of the site. Um, uh, we recommend the easement, uh, for the site and the waiver of the trees from the undeveloped portion. And that's our comments under relief, Chairman.
Okay, so Ally, remind me, do we need to vote on those as well?
No, we will not vote on those now. What we will do is, uh, ask the applicant to begin presenting their testimony.
Okay, um. Mr. Penzer, or Mr., who, who's presenting tonight for the applicant?
John Doyle.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle, please proceed with your presentation.
Uh, Chairman, members, and professionals, thank you for the opportunity to give for the board on what we believe is adequate and sufficient statutory compliant notice. Uh, I'm pleased and privileged to represent Toldas Yakov Yosef of Lakewood. While it's of Lakewood, it is a international network of schools. They made their, uh, first entry into Lakewood in 2012. Since then, they have grown by 15 times the original amount and are looking to further growth, which hopefully this school will accommodate once it's approved. It is a boys' elementary school. It is located on a site that has been previously approved for schools in 2010 and 2012. As you see on the map, it is an irregular triangular-shaped property on Squankum Road. It has five neighbors, all residential adjacent to it, and to which we would seek to have some, what we think are minimal variances reduced by the trees and fencing we would pro, propose and have mentioned and suggested before in discussions. Uh, the piece is 9.61 acres, but as you can see, the, uh, northerly rectangle is all wetlands and delineated as such by a letter of interpretation that has been received from the DEP. And while we can use that for passive recreation, consistent with the purposes of the school and for the benefit of the young boys that will be going there, we cannot build any structures. So we are compressed into the triangular piece. The feature you'll note mostly are the parking spaces. While required by the number of classrooms and teachers that have 49 spaces, we in fact provide 82 spaces. So part of this application, you will note the reports we have presented to your engineer and for the board, 12 separate reports, environmental, plastic, uh, operations, maintenance, uh, and so forth. These 12 reports, in totality, have been reviewed three separate occasions by your engineer, uh, the latest of which you've freshly reviewed, and each of those reports were occasioned by changes that the applicant has made to bring the site into greater conformity and more consistent with the engineering concerns laid out by Terry. Um, we are now at the point where I believe that the concerns are of limited nature. Our engineer, uh, witness, Brian Flannery, will present with respect to that. As I said earlier, we were deemed complete on May 16th, so we come to you with what we think is a well-balanced application. We would balance the variances we seek with the insulation of trees, an eight-foot-high fence, if the board would grant the variance for that. We would accommodate the neighbors' concerns by having those on the side that would be- that would be brunting on the neighbors. And so with all of that said, we would ask you to balance it against the proposal. There are no two greater institutions in Lakewood or in the world than family and education. We are a part of both. We are part of the family of schools in Lakewood and in our own institution across the world. We are seeking to provide education to young boys insistent with the values that their families have taught them and is inherent in this neighborhood. With that said, I'm prepared to proceed and...
Mr. Flannery, please raise your right hand. You swore a firm testimony to give before this board with the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but truth.
I do. Brian Flannery, Jackson, New Jersey, licensed professional engineer planner. I've been a licensed practicing planner for more than 30 years, appeared at thousands of board meetings throughout the state of New Jersey. I know the board is very familiar with me, and I'm assuming they're going to accept my qualifications.
Mr. Stern, do you recognize Mr. Flannery as an expert in the field of engineering and planning?
Can you hear me?
Now I can. I didn't hear before that. Do you rec-
Sorry, I had muted you, Mr. Stern. You're good now.
Oh, no wonder. Okay. Yep. So Brian, before you proceed, John, I was trying to get a question in. What is the difference between upland and wetland as far as what you... If you're not speaking, could you mute yourself in the background, please? John, what is the difference between the wetlands and the uplands as is noted on your... Your point is as far as what can and cannot be done?
Well, the New Jersey Department of-
You gotta mute yourselves.
The New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection defines wetlands-
Sorry, Mr. Flannery, hold on a minute. Mr. Jackson, stop unmuting yourself. That's what Mr. Stern is asking you to stop doing. Thank you.
The New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection has established three criteria for determination of freshwater wetlands. It's a presence of wetlands vegetation, presence of groundwater, and a modeling of the soil. So the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, upon submission of an application for a letter of interpretation, will go out and verify a line that's been established by an environmental consultant. In this case, DeVoy Environmental went out. They located a line that they felt complied with those three standards. The DEP came out, they verified it, and we have a letter of interpretation saying this is what the wetlands is. And as part of that letter interpretation, they say there's a 50-foot wetland buffer. We're not allowed to disturb any vegetation without getting DEP permission and a permit within either the buffer or the freshwater wetland area.
So is the what was designated on the map, Z1, where it says upland, is that your 50-foot buffer?
You can see on the map that's up there, and Ally, you can't see because you're driving.
I can't see it. Right.
There's a 50-foot dimension in between the two lines that run pretty much parallel to the rear of the building.
Got it. Okay, so that's your 50-foot buffer. What can you do in that 50-foot buffer, and what can you not do?
You can walk in the 50-foot buffer. You can't disturb vegetation. You can't dig or fill.
Can you put a playground there?
You can put a temporary structure that doesn't disturb the ground or vegetation.
So you can't put concrete footings and put up a playground?
That is correct.
Okay, please proceed with your presentation.
Hold on one minute. We're going... Mr. Stern, I had asked whether you recognized Mr. Flannery as an expert in the field of engineering and planning. And before I go to that question, I would ask Mr. Liston whether he has objection to Mr. Flannery being accepted and qualified as an expert in the field of engineering and planning.
Thank you, John.
Ally, you'll have to mute. There we go.
Right. Yes, I have an objection to Mr. Flannery. I have an objection to this entire proceeding based on the fact that it doesn't comply with the municipal end.
All right, we received your letter in that regard. You weren't on the meeting when it started, and we addressed all that. But can you please limit your comments to Mr. Flannery's qualifications? And if you have any board dear for him, or specifically what your objections are?
Yeah, I don't accept his qualifications. I think if they're going to be placed on the record, let him place them on the record.
Well, I did state-
You have the opportunity as the chair to recognize him, unless Mr. Liston has a specific objection. I know Mr. Liston has been involved with Mr. Flannery on numerous occasions in front of this board. He's familiar with them. I don't know if it's necessary in your discretion, but I took you, Mr. Stern.
No, no, no. We're accepting Mr. Flannery's qualifications. We're moving on. Mr. Flannery, please proceed.
Is he testifying as an architect or an engineer?
Well, I am a licensed architect. I had no architectural testimony that needed to be provided here. If there's questions with respect to the architecture, certainly qualified to do that. The testimony that I'm prepared to present tonight is with respect to engineering and planning and justification for the relief that's requested.
Are you doing that on behalf of a firm?
No, I'm not.
So you're just doing that as the engineer-
Brian Flannery, the licensed professional engineer planner that's been licensed since the 80s and since the 90s in architecture.
Okay, but you didn't prepare these plans. These plans were prepared by Glenn Lines.
That is correct.
Does he work for you?
Glenn Lines does not work for me. I have reviewed-
Did he do these plans under your-
Excuse me, Mr. Stern. Mr. Liston, respectfully, I think these questions might go to cross-examination, if that's allowed in this area. But I don't believe these go to the qualifications of Mr. Flannery, which the board has already accepted.
Mr. Liston, before you came on, we heard about your letter objecting to the format, and it was the opinion of this board that the essence of due process is the ability to cross-examine the witnesses. You will have adequate time to cross-examine Mr. Flannery and any other witnesses that the applicant puts forth. So for right now, I would like to move on and maybe reserve the questions about the particular application and who reviewed what to your time for cross-examination. Does that sound fair?
No, it doesn't, particularly because I'm just going to question whether Mr. Lines, who drew those plans, is going to testify about them. We don't intend to call Mr. Lines. We have Mr. Flannery, who knows the site, who knows the plans, and is familiar with them and can testify expertly and factually. But he did not prepare the plans. Is that correct, Mr. Doyle?
Excuse me, Mr. Stern. I believe you had a ruling on this matter, and it's my recommendation that we move on with the testimony. You asked, you told Mr. Liston he could cover this during cross-examination.
I don't believe cross-examination is the proper place to cover. I want to know why-
The chairman has ruled on that.
Why the applicant's engineer who prepared the plans is not going to testify.
Mr. Liston, why don't you go ahead? And I'm not trying to silence anybody, and so you go ahead and tell us your objections and keep going.
My objection is that the witness call to testify on these plans is not the engineer that prepared the plans. And that is normally the way it's done. Now, if there's a reason why Mr. Lines is not available tonight, I'd like to know it. There is no statute or case law requirement that would prevent Mr. Flannery from testifying as long as he is, as he has said, knows the site and is familiar with the plans. And there's no requirement that we produce Mr. Lines. We are making the application. We will determine after we proceed with the application. Presenting it the way we are is not inconsistent with the law or the MLU. It's also-
Mr. Doyle, pause. Mr. Doyle, pause. Mr. Liston, do you disagree with that legal point that Mr. Doyle's making?
Yes, I do.
On what basis?
I disagree with it. On the basis that the-
On what basis?
The engineer that prepared the plans should be the engineer to testify to the plans as to how they were prepared. If Mr. Flannery supervi... Excuse me. Mr. Flannery supervised the presentation, that's different. But Mr. Flannery is just coming in, looking at someone else's plans, and he's going to testify to them. That, I don't think, is the best testimony that can be presented with regard to these plans. I think that Mr. Lines should be- Yes.
Mr. Liston, you use the word "should." You're saying that the person who prepared the plans should be the one doing the presentation. Mr. Doyle just said, as a matter of... No, let me finish. As a matter of law, that that is not a requirement. So I'm asking you, what is the nature of your "should"? Are we doing something contrary to law by allowing Mr. Flannery to move forward and testify regarding those plans? And if your answer is yes, please cite chapter and verse or a case.
I'm just going to indicate that I think the best evidence would be the evidence prepared from the engineer that prepared the plans. Or-
Okay.
An engineer who was supervised by Mr. Flannery. Neither is the case. I don't think you're getting the best evidence.
Okay, Mr. Doyle, what is... I'm not sure what the word... If the legal best evidence is a term of art, please respond. I'm going to rule, then we're moving on.
You go ahead and rule, Mr. Stern. I've had my say on this. I think it's improper, and I think it's not the best evidence.
Okay, Mr. Doyle, what is your opinion? I want Mr.-
He's expert by his education, his regular performance before boards, and with respect to these plans, he's familiarized himself with them. He knows the site. He knows the plans. As Mr. Liston says, that's not the way we should provide. But he did not answer your question directly, citing chapter and verse. He's able to testify, and we would like to move on with our application.
Okay, so Mr. Liston, your objections are noted, and I tried to give you, you know, ample... So I think we understand where the disagreement is. We're going to move forward, and if, Mr. Liston, you choose to object or appeal, that is within your rights. But let's proceed going forward under these assumptions.
Mr. Chairman, time table, I have a question.
Please.
Yeah, a question to Mr. Liston. Is Brian Flannery legally allowed to represent or provide testimony regarding this architectural or planning or not? Legally, not what you think it was witnessed. Is he legally allowed to present this case?
Well, I think you ought to ask if you're... I'm sorry, who's asking this question?
My name is Chaim Sable, and I'm asking if legally, if Brian-
Do you want to be on the board?
I am.
Okay, ask your own attorney.
Okay, John, Mr. John.
Ask your own attorney.
John, Mr. Jackson.
Yes, Mr. Sable, I heard your question, and I do not know of any case doctrine rule, et cetera, that prohibits an engineer or an actor testifying in a land use proceeding as to plan for someone else. First of all, we have to see what his testimony is. Also, the best evidence rule that Mr. Liston referenced has absolutely nothing to do with this. The best evidence rule is something that controls original writings. It's an ancient principle where original writings have to be produced as opposed to a facsimile. It has nothing to do with land. And my recommendation is we abide by the chair's ruling and move forward at this time.
Okay, so the chair's ruling is we're glad everybody had their piece to say. We're moving on. Brian, please continue.
Mr. Flannery, if you would, and so as not to intrude on your presentation with a lot of questions, take us through the site. Take us through the application and proposal. Take us through Mr. Boat's letter, and then particularly the variances and door waivers we seek just as-
All right, the first thing I'd like to do is mark exhibits which have been submitted and are part of the public record. A1 would be sheet 38 of the tax form where the subject property is colored in yellow, and it clearly shows that this site is in the northerly end of Lakewood Township along Squankum Road. The northern boundary of the site is the Tetequeh River, which is the municipal boundary line. To the east of us, I'm sure the board is all familiar, is the old Tilton Junkyard Site and the JCPNL Site on lots nine and seven respectively in block 172 to the east. To the south and west of us is the Apollo Road Development. There's 42 single-family detached lots on a series of three-and-a-half cul-de-sacs coming off of Squankum Road. A2 would be the aerial rendering that was submitted, which again shows the subject property. You can see on the bottom of the sheet on the opposite side of Squankum Road where the Tilton Junkyard Site is. That's where the old abandoned building and the gravel parking lot is. And then to the south of that, the driveway for the JCPNL facility. A4, A3 would be sheet three of the plans, which is the layout and dimension plan. And A4 would be the colored rendering showing the beautiful school building that's being proposed here. Part of the application that was submitted was a statement of operations from the school. As Mr. Doyle indicated, this is a school that's associated with a larger school network. There's a lot of demand for the school space that's available. Because of their current facility, they turn children away every year. We all know in Lakewood, having enough space for the private school children is something that's a high priority, which I will hit later on in my testimony regarding the relief that's required. As indicated in this statement of operations, the intent is to have a total of 825 students in 33 classrooms. Each classroom would have 25 students. They're currently at 250 students. Grades six to eight start at 7:30. Grades primary through five start at 8:45, and the kindergarten and nursery starts at 9:45. The dismissals are also staggered. Kindergarten dismisses at 2:30. Grade, first grade dismisses at 3:45. Second through fifth dismiss at 4:30. Sixth and seventh dismiss at 5:15, and eighth grade dismisses at 6 o'clock on Friday. All grades dismiss at 12:30. And it goes through the dismissals on Sunday also. They go on to indicate that they currently have four buses. They do their own transportation so that they eliminate the need for car pulls. They can manage the staggering so that the traffic impact is minimized. So then getting to the report, as indicated on page two, we're proposing a three-story school, a lower level, and then two levels above that with a total of 82 parking spaces where, per the ordinance, 49 are required. On page three, it indicates the submission waivers that are proposed, which the board approved. Those submission waivers were because sufficient information was provided without going to the extent of providing the additional information for the board to review the plans. Then we get to zoning. Under item two, the first one indicates that schools are permitted use in this zone. Then we get to the relief, and the relief really relates to two items. One is this small piece of triangular piece of the building which is over the 50-foot setback. The layout plan, sheet three of the plan, does show the 50-foot setback. And just, I'm assuming the board is familiar with this. The setback was changed with the 2017 master plan for schools. Schools have a bigger setback than a residential structure in this zone. Schools have a bigger setback than a residential structure in this zone. Residential would have a 30-foot setback. The school has a 50-foot setback. And the important thing, and the discussions during that 2007 master plan, is not having overpowering school buildings up close to the roadway. If you look at this particular case, this is 225 square feet on a 20,000-square-foot footprint. So, it's roughly 1% of the building is over that 35-foot setback line, and the remainder of it is well behind it. It's also a triangular piece rather than a big piece of the building. So, my testimony is the relief relating to this is de minimis, and I'll go through the justification for that later on. Looking at this particular property, it's a very large piece of property, but because of the wetlands and buffer lines, there's a small area that can be developed, and that area is not rectangular. The area has a lot of changes in geometry, as well as changes in topography. So, the site drops off to the wetlands, as one would expect, because the water currently runs in that direction downhill ultimately to the Petita Clock River. The second item that we need relief for is a 20-foot buffer. And along our side property line, where currently there is a school and there is parking, in that area, we proposed a row of 20 parking spaces, which are in the buffer. I've given testimony of this nature in the past with respect to the buffer, indicating that the applicant could eliminate those spaces and still comply the amount of parking that's required by the ordinance. The ordinance requires 49 spaces, and we provided 82. So, if we take those 20 away, we still have 62, which exceeds the ordinance. But parking in Lakewood is always in high demand, and due to the fact that we don't want anybody using this facility to need to park off-site, we felt that we could comply with the intent of the ordinance with respect to buffering by proposing fencing and trees, and at the same time, provide the benefit of additional parking spaces. Typically, when you would look at relief that's requested, a lot of times, the initial assumption is that, well, we're building something bigger than fits on the site, that's why we need the relief. In this particular case, that's not the situation. The corner of the building is a hardship due to the geometry of the property, and in order to do that along the setback line without losing floor space for the school, which is an inherently beneficial use, we would have to have a very unusual construction situation. The applicant feels that the relief that's requested here is something that's a huge benefit to them, no adverse impact to the general public. With respect to the buffering and the parking, again, the applicant's position is that the intent of the buffering can be provided with a fence and landscaping, and that will allow the benefit of 20 additional parking spaces. Additionally, it's the same kind of item on page four, a number four, with respect to parking setback, because the ordinance specifically says no parking within five feet of the adjoining lot. So, these parking spaces are five feet, so they're in the buffer, and parking spaces are clearly not allowed in the buffer. I indicated that I would speak to the justification for these variances. And the corner of the building over the traffic line, over the setback line, my opinion is that's a C1 hardship variance because of the geometry of the property, as well as a C2 variance where the benefits outweigh the detriment. With respect to the buffer, Section 18-906, under buffer requirements, A3 says, "A required buffer shall be landscaped with trees, shrubs, other suitable plantings for beautification and screening. Natural vegetation shall be retained to the maximum degree possible on those sites where no existing vegetation is present or existing vegetation is inadequate to provide screening," which is where we are, because that vegetation was removed by a prior school approval, which did get a buffer relief. So, we're in that situation. "The applicant shall suitably grade and plant the required buffer area such that planting shall provide an adequate screen of it, at least six feet in height, so as to continually restrict the view. A minimum on-center distance between plantings shall be such that maturity-- The buffer will create a solid screen, and the buffer may be supplemented with fence of solid material where necessary." The school is proposing fencing along the property line. The ordinance allows, once you pass the front setback, an eight-foot-high fence. The applicant is willing to put an eight-foot-high solid fence all the way along that property line. The applicant would put a taller fence toward the road if the board felt that was necessary and would grant the variance for a fence exceeding four feet in the front setback. And the front setback would be a little questionable in this case, because the front setback for a residence is 30 feet. So, my opinion would be the fence, since it's not a school, you could go up to the 30-foot mark at eight foot, and then from 30-foot forward at four. Again, the school wants to be a good neighbor. They reached out to the neighbors, unfortunately. No agreement has been reached at this time, but the applicant is willing to provide any buffering that's requested by the board. The applicant is willing, if the board thinks those 20 spaces should be eliminated, to eliminate the 20 spaces, and we would be 20 spaces shorter. It's our opinion that the benefits of them certainly outweigh any detriment. With respect to the concept of buffering, in the ordinance, Section 18-803, E-Buffering, E2 says, "Buffering shall be required when topographic or other barriers do not provide reasonable screening, and when the board determines there is a need to shield the site from adjacent properties and to minimize adverse impacts such as incompatible land uses, noise, glaring light, and traffic." So, we feel that the school can provide the intent of that buffering that I just read by providing fencing and landscape. With respect to the 2017 master plan, on page seven of that, under the vision statement, A is encourage growth, encourage development and redevelopment based on smart growth planning principles, such as a balanced mix of land uses, pedestrian-friendly transient environment with a sense of place. Well, this is certainly a redevelopment of a piece of property that at one point had a house, a house on Squankham Road that wasn't friendly toward residential. That was converted to a school and inherently beneficial use. Now, we're putting in a school that's going to provide schooling for 825 students in Lakewood. It's certainly an inherently beneficial use. It's certainly a benefit. That same vision statement on page seven, it goes down in the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, in the sixth bullet. It says, "Provide sufficient educational, recreational, and community facilities to meet future needs." That's what this school is doing. On the same master plan of 2017, page 10, "Community Facility Strategy," number four, "Continue to support the development of private schools in the township of Lakewood." That's what we're doing here with an application that my testimony, it is virtually relief free. The corner that's proposed here, I don't think adversely impacts anybody. The parking that's in the buffer, if anybody feels that that's inappropriate, we don't need that per the ordinance, and that could be deleted. The Municipal Land Use Law, NJAC 40,55D2, under the purposes of the Act, A is to encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use or development of all lands and estate in a manner which will promote public health, safety, morals, and general welfare. And it's my testimony that this does this. This promotes the general welfare. This provides, on a county road buffered on one side by a wooded area almost out of Lakewood, an opportunity for inherently beneficial educational facility. We do have five neighbors that are next to it, and those five neighbors, we recognize our requirement to provide adequate buffering for them, and we're committed to do that to whatever extent the board feels, because Section 18-803 says the board should determine. The C1 variance for this 225 square feet that's over the setback line, it's my testimony that that is a hardship. The hardship is generated by a school building. You're going to have a building that follows one of the lines, whichever line on this property-- Whatever one we follow ends up with a unusual geometric feature in the building that's going to adversely affect the size of the building related to setback line. The C2 variance is, and it's my testimony, this is also a C2 variance for the front yard setback, which is 14.9 feet over the setback line, and the buffer relief, a C2 variance. To get a C2 variance, we have to show that it relates to a specific piece of property. I think this property, as I've already discussed, certainly is a specific piece of property. It's a unique piece of property. The school is uniquely suited to be developed on this property. And it's my opinion that the design of this school, and I was involved from early on, there were initial sketches that were done by a different company that I reviewed on behalf of the school. As the plans were being developed by New Lines, I reviewed them on behalf of the school. And it's a unique property that provided a school with parking exceeding the ordinance requirement. So, it's my testimony, it meets that prong of the requirements we need to show for a C2 variance. The purposes of the Municipal Land Use Law would be advanced, and specifically, it enhances the general welfare. As I testified, the variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. And it's my testimony that neither this 225 square feet or the parking, which can be eliminated, are substantially detrimental to the public good. The variance will not impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. And as I've indicated by the master plan, it advances the purposes of the master plan, and it's consistent with the zoning ordinance, with the exception of two de minimis features, one of which can be eliminated very easily, will have no real impact on anything other than providing a difficult building situation and difficult spaces for the school. The other one can be made to comply very easily as well, but then 20 parking spaces, which are benefits of the town, will be eliminated. So, the show of proof is that the benefits substantially outweigh the detriment. My testimony is there are virtually no detriments from the relief that we're requesting and the benefits I've already indicated, and it certainly relates to inherently beneficial use. So, we need to show, and it's a two-pronged thing, that the variance or other relief can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, which is adversely impacting somebody. This 225 square feet and the additional parking spaces, if they're buffered properly, do not-- are not substantially detrimental to the public good, and it will not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. And I think that's clear to this board at face value. That's with respect to the variance relief that's needed. The design waivers that we're asking for, continuing on page four, design waivers is item three. The design waiver is for not providing curb and sidewalk into Monmouth County along Squankham Road. And it should be noted, this is a county road. We need county approval. If the county says we should go to the DEP and ask them for a permit, which it's my opinion, the DEP is not going to be inclined to grant. As it's out there now, provides for safety, and it's been a safe, acceptable access point all these years. The development of the school isn't going to change that. Development of the school is going to provide sidewalk along here so that any of the pedestrian access to the school has a proper sidewalk to walk on. The second design waiver that we're requesting is with respect to shade tree and utility equipment. The applicant will happily add the shade tree utility. In the RBE report, they don't even recommend putting the shade trees, because the plant trees in the woods along the wetlands would make no sense. Under the review comments, the parking calculations, as they indicate, there are 82 parking spaces proposed, 20 of which are in the buffer area, which if the board feels they should be eliminated to provide a better buffer, the applicant has no objection to that, and we would amend our application accordingly. That would still leave us with 62, where 49 are required.
Also, Brian, let me just say, so there really aren't 82? Are you agreeing with Terry's comment here?
Well, Terry's comment is that the plan I submitted showed 21 along this line. If you count them, there's only 20. So, Terry is very good at counting. My-- what I think must have happened is at one point, there were more. It got eliminated for a sidewalk or something different. But there are 20 here rather than the 21 that's noted, and if the board acts favorably as part of resolution compliance, that 21 will be changed to a 20. With that 20, we have 82 parking spaces. The plan I submitted said we had 83.
So, we're talking one, we're talking one, not 60, or not 20? Okay, good.
The only time the 20 changes is if the board says, "No, let's give those people a bigger buffer," then delete the 20 spaces, and there's 62 that are left.
Got it.
The report indicates that the testimony should be about the number of students, and the report goes on to show the numbers from the traffic study with the number of buses and the number of students. Again, 825 proposed students is what we're ultimately, the build-out would be. Item 10 says testimony should be provided with respect to the check-- And we do have an area for them. We have a loading area to get in, and that will be subject to DPW review. This plan does add, as the board likes to see, a sidewalk, from the sidewalk along Squankham through to the parking lot, a crosswalk to the walk in front of the school. So, that's something that the board likes to see, and has been asking applicants, New Lines being aware of that, showed the crosswalk along Squankham, and then showed a sidewalk and a crosswalk to get to the building. So, any pedestrian access to or from the building as a safe place to travel.
Thank you, Brian. I'm glad New Lines got the concept.
Yes, you need to thank New Lines for that. I am certainly aware of that being a safety issue, and if they hadn't done it before I got involved, I certainly would have recommended it as well.
And I'm sure you will in the future for different applications as well.
Yes, yes. Item 20 is with respect to the storm order system. It will be maintained by the applicant.
Brian, the paper showing in the traffic study, 750 students. You said it's going to be 800 and something?
825, yes.
So, would that adversely affect the traffic study that was done?
No, the difference in students is a couple extra kids in each bus, so--
Right, but you had mentioned before, there's four buses, correct?
Well, there's four buses presently. They will certainly need more buses when there's more students.
Well, even now, on your Friday, you said they're all dismissed at 12:30. How are they working that with four buses?
Well, I would assume what's going to happen, and it's a good thing, this is a very active school and a very concerned school. So, when they get to the point where more buses then sit along here, and this area in here, four buses could currently park, when they get to a point where-- here, four buses could currently park, when they get to a point where more than four buses is needed, they'll have to have a dismissal at 12:15 and 12:30. They'll have to stagger it.
And you mentioned the schools own the buses. Where are they keeping them overnight?
The buses will not be kept on-site. They will, the drivers can take them home, or they can find a storage location on another property where they can be properly stored. And we certainly, if the board acts favorably, would expect the condition that says school buses should not be parked on the site overnight.
How about during the day, would they be on-site?
Well, we could also say that the school buses should not be parked on-site except when loading and unloading students. That's the only time the school buses should be there.
Okay.
And that would also help with the, in case there's a hall over there, they're not going to miss any parking spots. It'll be available, the 82 will be available.
Correct. Item 24 indicates testimony should be provided with respect to the sanitary sewer. The sanitary sewer is further south on Squonkum Road. There will be an ejector station in the building, and the sanitary sewer will be pumped to a manhole that's being extended northerly along Squonkum Road. So we will have a public sewer connected to the New Jersey American system. The item 25 is the shade tree commission, and I would give my standard answer to the shade tree commission. We will provide whatever's required by ordinance and whatever the board engineer thinks is appropriate. So any of the comments that the board engineer feels are appropriate, or if the board, if they want to give input, the applicant is happy to provide the landscaping as recommended. And I think that's the summation of all the comments that need to be addressed.
Okay, I have a couple of quick questions. First of all, will any children be walking to school?
I don't foresee a situation where any children would walk to school. The school has the buses, the intention is to pick them up, so the school does not intend to have any children walking.
Okay. You'd also mentioned that there was a topography of the northern slope would go down, a little bit sloping down on the northern side away from, is that, that's the area where you're not allowed to touch it, is that correct?
We're not allowed to touch it from the wetland, the 50-foot wetland buffer line north.
Uh-huh. So the building itself is allowed to, is going to be evened out, that area?
The building itself, it's going to be higher in the front than in the back.
So would there be runoff from the parking lot into the wetlands? If they have garbage or whatever else, would that be blocked in some way or drained?
All of the runoff that occurs in the parking lot is picked up in a drainage system that's reviewed by the board engineer and directed to a stormwater management system that it's in accordance with state stormwater standards.
Okay. As far as events in the building in the evening, as far as the hall that they have, what can you tell us about that?
Well, the intention of the dining room, and it's a 4,359-square-foot dining room, that's proposed to accommodate the students that are here. So we're not building the dining room as a hall to rent out. We're building the dining room so that the students have a proper place to eat. A dining room of that size, the code standard is 15 square feet per occupant, which would be 290 students. I haven't been in them, but I've been advised that in some private schools, a few more students than that are there, so that it may get close to 400 students at a time. So with the 825 students, that's the size that's appropriate. And again, this school is associated with a network of schools. They know what size dining room is needed. The dining room was designed to accommodate the projected student population to the extent that the dining room's not being used and there's an event available similar to what's done in every school that I've known of.
So your testimony is that there won't be any outside events at this hall?
Well, the testimony is that their dining room would be used in the same fashion that every other school dining room is used in Lakewood.
Well, that's different purposes for different schools, so that's too vague a statement. Do they plan on renting it out to anyone else for outside purposes?
They would not want a restriction on renting it out because if there was an appropriate event where they were able to get some income to help offset the costs of the schools.
How about time limits at night? Time limit restrictions?
Yes.
Not which by 11 o'clock, everything would be closed down, or 10:30 or whatever? Is that something agreeable?
I would have to reach out to the school to see what time.
Because the concern is for the neighbors to have not have noise late at night, that's the point.
Yes.
You didn't really answer, you didn't really answer the first question, though, Brian. It was asked twice, you didn't really answer it. So is it the present intention of this institution to be renting out their dining room on a regular basis to generate income? I'm not saying it's good or bad, but you need to answer the question. You've answered it twice.
I don't think the intention is to rent it out on a regular basis, but the intention would be to rent it out for events that are appropriate for the size of the room. And again, a 4,300-square-foot room isn't something you rent for weddings. It's for appropriate events, and it's not on a regular basis. So the answer is, they intend to rent it to offset the cost, not on a regular basis.
Okay. And it's being designed to be like a fancier hall rather than a typical school room, dining room in a school?
I think it's being designed like many of the other dining rooms that I see.
That's too vague. Again, are they putting in chandeliers? Are they putting in special lighting?
We didn't get the plans that detailed at this point. Again, I could reach out to the school and ask them if they're planning on chandeliers and special lighting.
Okay. Another question about that area about in the buffer zone. Can we limit that to head-in parking only, meaning so that the fumes from the cars that would back in perhaps would not be affecting the neighbors as much, and it could be head-in only? Is that something that's agreeable?
Yes, that is a very good idea, and we would certainly agree to that.
Okay. Also, in general, there's no parking in the loading zone at any time during the day, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And one last question you had mentioned before about possibly superficial above-ground playground area. You said you can't put in cement. Can they put in mulch in that area?
Yes.
Okay. All right, very good. That's all my questions.
Well, let me add to that. So Brian, where are these 825 kids playing in the buffer zone?
Yes.
So are there going to be any jungle gyms?
I would expect that the school would put in temporary, not fixed-in-concrete recreation items so that the children have something to play.
That's a lot of kids without playground equipment.
Well, they're there to learn.
Well, I know, but they need to burn off a little steam, otherwise they can't learn. So they can't play, they're not going to have any impervious surface to play kickball, to play, I don't know what the kids play anymore, but you can't play hockey, you can't play anything, and you can't put any jungle gyms in of any permanent nature. So basically, you've got a field, they can't play soccer, they can't play basketball. What can they play, Mr. Flannery?
They can certainly kick a soccer ball around, they can throw baseballs, they can throw frisbees, they can do any of those activities. You can play chase, there's some trees in here, and so they can walk around and let off steam.
Brian, I have a question regarding, and it's my only concern about the site is the playground. Maybe perhaps we could take off the four spots, which are the most west to the parking lot. You got the four on top. Maybe we remove those four and put a big playground in there with some either swingset or maybe just pavement for soccer. We do have 82, we'll have 78 parking spots, which is still an access of require, but they need to have a playground. This is a lot of kids, and they need to.
I think that's a good idea, and the applicant would certainly be willing to do that.
Mr. Chairman, do you think that's a good idea? You have any better suggestions?
I think it's something, I just, in the end of the day, I think our, it just seems inadequate, but as long as, I mean, our biggest challenge is to make sure the impacts on the neighbors are de minimis or acceptable. It certainly seems there should be some element of recreation for 800 kids, but I'm not sure where we would put it. So I think your suggestion is as good as any.
And I would add that because of Mr. Raydick's concern about a Friday parking spot, in case they need to add additional buses, I would add the bottom part of that new playground area, we would put a sidewalk continuing from the building going, what is it, going south or west to cover the, put a sidewalk in between the playground and the parking area. So kids, if they need to go up onto buses, we can actually stagger a lot more buses up. I don't know if I explained it well in English.
Yes, I understood what you said.
Can you demonstrate it on the map that you have, on that sheet?
On this sheet, what you're indicating is the sidewalk would extend across and the playground would be behind it.
Correct. That will help with the busing, it will help with the playground, and that area should be made for playgrounds only, with a big gate.
And the applicant has indicated to me that the events limiting them from 6:00 to 11:00, they have no problem, and that was what they intended anyway.
Are there any plans for a pool in the area?
No.
Brian, one more question regarding, go ahead.
No, you've got the loading area, you've got the employee parking, and then you've got this, you know, a lot of this kind of funky triangle that's not being utilized. I can't really figure this out, but could you move the loading area somewhere else and make that big triangle a fenced playground area with swings and everything for the kindergarten kids and the first graders and the second graders? Can you move the loading area and convert that? That's exactly it. Thank you, Ally. Can you move all of that somewhere else, maybe where Mr. Sable wants to put your things? I don't know, but I know you want to have loading near the kitchen, but, gosh, guys, I really think you need to have a playground for the kids.
Well, I think if the loading was up in the area where Mr. Sable was talking about before, then we're mixing the buses with the trucks, but I think what we could do is, instead of eliminating the four spaces up there, we eliminate the three employee parking spaces and shorten up the loading dock, and then we could have a fenced-in area that would be more sizable than on the west side of the building.
Brian, why do you need a loading area? Why don't you just double up the bus loading area with your loading area and just make sure the deliveries don't come during drop-off and pickup?
For garbage.
Oh, garbage.
And again, this could be shortened up substantially to accomplish that.
So we can bring that garbage cans or dumpster closer to the point of the building where the variance is requested, and leave the entire area behind it, which is a pretty big area for playgrounds.
Yes.
I mean, it's unsightly, but I'd rather have a playground for the kids and have a little bit of unsightly garbage.
But would it smell for the kids playing right there?
So far, it's worse.
They'll screen it up properly. Hey, Brian, we're going to have to extend the sidewalk going from the front of the building to that new area that's going to encroach into the variance, though. I don't know if you're allowed to or not allowed to on previous coverage.
No, we have no problem with impervious coverage here, and measuring this loading area, it's about 100 feet long, and we don't need it to be that long at all. We could do something that was 50 feet long, and that pulls this back 50 feet, it pulls out those employee parking spaces, and it makes a nice area for a playground. That would probably be for the younger kids, and the older kids would still have the area behind the building.
I'm not as worried about the older kids, Brian. It's the little kids need to have a safe, you're right next to the swamp, right?
Yes.
So you don't want the little kidless wandering around into the swamp.
No, this is not Alabama, this is New Jersey, so we don't want them wandering the swamp. But I think we could make a nice area by shortening, cutting the loading area in half, moving that and eliminating those three employee parking spaces.
Maybe put the employee parking where Hyam wanted to get rid of those ones up on number four.
The employees can park in any of the places, and the school administration can tell the employees, you park in the, you know, we're going to have three employees that would have been able to park there, that every day they walk in, if they know this, they're going to be like, I'm doing that extra walking because the board changed it. But in the long run, they'll be happier, they'll get some exercise, and they'll feel better for it.
Yeah, let's just make a nice, big triangle parking playground for the kids with the kids.
Yes, the applicant agrees to do that.
Brian, do you think that triangle would be enough for 800 kids? A big one playing soccer and basketball, and then the smaller kid with kiddie toys?
I think this area here would be good for the smaller kids. And in the back, if temporary fencing is done, which doesn't have posts going into the ground, it can be done with weights, it can be done with supports along the ground. Fencing can be provided in the back. So the school fully intends to accommodate that. We don't show the plans on here because there's no requirement in the ordinance for recreation.
And then as soon as we have one hurricane, that fence goes down and somebody has to put it back up, and then it's not going to happen. So we want to avoid the kids having in the back. If they end up there, I guess the school has to deal with it. I still think we should have both of them, the right side where the employee parking is and on top. And the main reason I want to corner off that four is because of the sidewalk for bus loading. So if you put a nice bus, we can add at least another bus or two for Fridays or days that gets very busy, and we can have a nice big area as well over there, a straight surface, a paved area for ball activity.
The applicant certainly has sufficient parking to eliminate in both areas if that's what the board feels is appropriate.
Thank you. The nice, beautiful fence with some ballards, beautiful. Kids will be able to learn tighter much better if they play.
Okay, so Ally or John, I'm sure Mr. Liston has questions and wants to cross-examine. Would, should we open up to the public in general first, or should we let Mr. Liston proceed?
I think it's appropriate to let Mr. Liston do the cross-examination at this time because his questions might cover what many members of the public might want to cover.
I absolutely have one more question, Brian.
Okay, let's do that then. What I'd like to do is take a five-minute break, and then when we come back, we'll set a very specific time that we'll have Mr. Liston proceed.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr.?
I have one question before you go to break.
Go ahead, you've got two times, go ahead.
Brian, in the back here, in the back, where I guess the supposed dining room or maybe a simple hall eventually, these entrances, people are going to go in from the back entrance. I don't know if you look at the layout of the dining room, there's steps going from the back. I think we need to provide a safe walkway for those people going in because I guess the men and women are going separate. One is going to go from the main entrance. I don't see the entrance for the other, unless they use the stair in the back, stairs going up and down.
Certainly, our intention was that everybody would come into that room from the main entrance.
Well, it's not going to happen. It's a skiver and moistest, and it's men and women, it's going to be separate.
It's an emergency exit.
Well, okay. Well, it is this kind of an emergency situation.
It's a good question, Chaim.
Thank you, Bruce.
I don't know if it's relevant, if it's our venue to point that out to them, but all right.
The, the steps that were indicated there were done as an emergency uh, exit.
So how can we get them a separate entrance safely?
Brian, what Chaim is saying is not so much an ordinance issue. It could be a fatal flaw in your design. And while we take a five-minute break, you might want to talk to somebody for your client to make sure there is a separate men's and women's entrance that are safe and feasible.
Okay, good idea.
Okay. Um, before we sign off, how many children per classroom do we expect?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five, okay. Terry, could I trouble you when we take our five-minute break just to count the number of classrooms and, and multiply it by twenty-five and see what that number is and then multiply it by thirty as an abundance of caution? And we come back, if you could have those numbers for me, please.
I'll do my best, Chairman.
Okay, thank you. All right. It is now seven thirty-two. Uh, we'd like to reconvene at seven forty sharp, if that's okay with everybody. And the plan would be, Mr. Liston, you'll be up at seven forty.
Just a reminder that this is still live to the public.
That's fine.
If your mic is not muted, you may want to mute it if you're gonna have side conversations or use the restroom or anything like that. Thank you.
So now you're on mute.
Are we back on?
I don't see Mr. Stern yet. We're gonna give it just a minute. Here he comes. Mr. Stern, you're muted. Thank you.
Okay, I've removed my mute. It is seven forty. We are live again.
Would you like me to retake role to confirm everyone's back?
Excellent idea.
Uh, Mr. Garfield? I'm sorry, I think he was muted. Hold on just a minute. Mr. Garfield?
Here.
Mr. Sable?
Here.
Mr. Flansbauer?
Here.
Mr. Meyer? Mr. Meyer, are you back? Mr. Meyer has not returned yet. Give him a minute, I believe. Mr. Raydick, you're here?
Here.
Thank you. So we're just waiting for Mr. Meyer.
I just saw Mr. Meyer's uh, microphone light up, said he was speaking. Are you, Mr. Meyer?
It could just be background noise as well.
There it is.
Jakey? Ally, you wanna call him on his cellphone?
Sure. That's me calling him in the background. You can hear it echoing.
Okay.
Ally, I'm here.
Great, thank you.
Okay. All right, so we have a quorum. Before we let Mr. Liston proceed, um, Terry, did you have a chance to do those calculations or I did not give you enough time?
Uh, yes, I did, Chairman. Um, I reviewed the, the set of architectural plans that I have in my packet. Uh, as referenced in our review dated February twenty-six, two thousand twenty, uh, proposed boys' elementary school building for Talmatora T Y Y. Per my review, you have a total uh, of thirty-three classrooms. Uh, that does not include three tutor rooms shown, but I'm assuming that they will be auxiliary to, to, to the main classrooms. So uh, to calculate the number of students for thirty-three classrooms, uh, at twenty-five students per class, that would be eight hundred and twenty-five students. And at thirty students per class, it would be nine hundred and ninety students.
Terry, can you say the last numbers again? You broke up.
All right. The last number, if you calculated thirty students per class, uh, we calculated nine hundred and twenty students.
For the thirty?
For the thirty.
And how much is the twenty-five?
The twenty-five would be eight hundred and twenty-five.
Which is what Mr. Flannery is basically saying.
I, I believe so.
Okay, fine. Okay, um, John, um, unless there's something else, I think we should let Mr. Liston proceed with this cross examination. Does that seem like a good idea?
I think that is uh, appropriate. Um, Mr. Liston, are you prepared to go? I am. Am I on?
Yes, you are. We hear your last letter. Please proceed.
All right. At the outset, let me indicate that my participation in this meeting did not in any way, shape or form be taken as um, my agreeing that the meeting is properly noticed or that the rules that were set out in the notice as um, further interpreted by your administrator, uh, do not violate the civil rights of my clients. I, and the municipal Andrew's law. I am participating under progress and uh, I, sorry, I didn't get on in time, frankly. I was, I'm not very good at this stuff, but um, I'm assuming that you uh, took my letter into consideration and made it part of the record. And I stand by what I wrote in that letter and I intend to proceed in accordance with the matter which I indicated in that letter. That is to immediately file a lawsuit that this matter is approved. Having said that, I have a few questions for Brian. Brian?
Mr. Liston, Mr. Liston, Mr. Liston, before I, before you proceed, who are your client? I don't need to know names, but how many clients do you have? Where do they live? What's their, just kind of give us a flavor.
That was all in the letter.
I'm sorry, I didn't read. Okay, fine.
Okay. I just wondered, Ms. Morris, have, have you provided that uh, letter to all the board members?
I did not. Would you like me to put it on the screen or?
Let's uh, put that on the screen.
As well as a statement of operation from Mr. Doyle.
And um, Ms. Morris, if you can please uh, forward that to the board member so they actually have a copy, but we'll look at it on the screen as well.
Okay, I, give me just a moment. I can only do.
This letter is eleven pages, is my recollection. I think it's going to take everyone a, a, a few moments to read it.
Oh, that's the wrong letter. I'm sorry. That's a statement of operation. This is a letter from Mr. Liston.
Okay.
I did forward it to the board as well just now.
Okay, so eighteen, that's important. Okay.
The record, the record will reflect that the board secretary is scrolling through the letter to give the uh, board members an opportunity to read same. If anyone, if it's going to, just speak up and she'll slow the scroll down.
A quick question for Mr. Flannery. In the interim, before the school fills up to the size of eight hundred and twenty-five or plus students, do they plan on renting it out to a different school?
No, they do not.
Uh, any portion of the building?
No, they, they don't intend to rent it out.
They anticipate to fill it up immediately?
Not immediately, but quickly.
And they will not be using the rest of the building in the interim?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay.
Ally, is it correct that the people who are not immediate neighbors or directly affected by it can't testify or can't ask questions about this property?
I'll address that. I'm sorry, who asked that question?
Mr. Atzik.
Mr. Atzik, the format announces that people, and this is the way all of our meetings and the Board of Adjustment has proceeded, and this is in conjunction with the consultation with the township attorney. But the... If you and submit comments in advance, there's also the opportunity during the meeting to submit email questions. And we've received questions, and people have done follow-up questions. And the experts and the applicants have responded to those questions. Now, in terms of having a live dialogue back and forth, that is not available at this time.
Right, so his claim is that it's not a full hearing based on that. In other words, you don't have Klein, you don't have Moshe Zynas making their input. Is that something that's a problem in this type of case?
Mr. Zynas, if my recollection serves me, has submitted written comments in other applications. I don't recall seeing anything from Mr. Klein, but to answer your question directly, if somebody wanted to listen and participate like a board member or Mr. Liston, they do not have the ability to have a live dialogue in the verbal format. You can do it in a written format.
And if they submit it in written format, then it should be included?
Yes. What we've done is whenever we get an email, Ms. Morris reads that into the record. Sometimes we put it on the screen, and then we respond to those written inquiries that happen in real time. Well, they, you know, they go in the queue, and then when we get to that point, let me put them up.
Okay. And Mr. Atzik, this has been working the last few months. People were able to avoid their opinions and objections.
It's been my observation, the board can make its own assessment of that, that we have had comments and people participating in that matter. In fact, we have a lot of comments tonight that we have to read on this case.
Okay, so let's... Having read your letter, Mr. Liston, one of the things we said was that having the right to cross-examine, especially in a contested manner, is paramount. So we agree with that section of your letter. And with that introduction, please proceed with your cross-examination.
Before I proceed with my cross-examination, I want to indicate for the record that there is nothing in your notice that indicates that you may cross-examine. Everything must be done in writing two days in advance. As Mr. Jackson knows, as Mr. Doyle knows, cross-examination is something which is a lot more spontaneous than that and should be allowed not only for attorneys, but also for people who are unrepresented. And the clear import of your notice and of the comments made by your administrators indicates that if you're represented by an attorney, you can't speak, period. And it also indicates that the only people that are allowed to speak, and as you said at one point, testify, attorneys don't testify, are the attorneys, the applicant, and their professionals, period. So the notice is absolutely violates every principle of fair play and every principle of due process of law. And I stand by that, and I am confident that when we take this to court, the court, and one of the things I'm asked the court to do, is to give the Lakewood Planning Board instructions as to how a virtual meeting can be conducted. I would also point out that, and I'm sure you folks have done this, if you look at any other notice for a virtual meeting or any other board in this county or in Monmouth County, or for that matter, if you read the Star Ledger in the state, none of those notices have anything close to these draconian restrictions on public comment and cross-examination. So this is something which I'm surprised no one has brought to your attention to this point, that I'm bringing to your attention. And as far as I'm concerned, you're all wasting your time this evening listening to this. But I will play along only for purposes of not being accused of talking over you. But by no means should anybody think that I approve of this procedure.
Mr. Liston, excuse me. Ally, can you mute people? There's way too much going on. I can't hear Mr. Liston.
I'm sorry. To everyone on the meeting, please don't unmute until you're just about to speak. Thank you.
So did we get that on the record or not?
Excuse me?
Yes, we heard that, yes.
Yes, we heard everything.
All right. Well, okay, I'm glad you heard it. Mr. Stern, if I might just add something. One of the cases that Mr. Liston started was Morris County Housing versus Council of Booton for the proposition that, you know, you have to allow cross-examination. That is a Law Division case by a judge who went on to become an appellate division judge. And in one of the comments, they talk about, you know, the need for cross-examination at a time required for completion may vary greatly depending on the content of the witness's testimony. The control of cross-examination must be left to the... The control of cross-examination must be left to the sound discretion of the board. So, you know, extrapolating from that, under the circumstances, in the COVID environment, and the fact that it literally creates a threat to health, safety, and welfare to bring them in, technology that's available, what we're able to do, this is a learning and evolving process. And in the light of other matters and issues that have confronted the township, you know, when Lakewood initially had its public forum in the council setting, I understand that there were people who called in to make very inappropriate comments that were disruptive to the council meeting. And that is one of the reasons why the mayor and the municipal attorney thought it was appropriate to limit them to written comments. In my view, under the circumstances, it does allow people to voice their concern. It does allow people to question witnesses. I note this is a land use proceeding. It's quasi-judicial. It's akin to an administrative proceeding. Cross-examination means, you know, different things in different contexts. And, you know, Mr. Liston may or may not have the ability to make the objection on behalf of people who are not his clients. But as it relates to his particular comment, his particular client, what his particular objection is, I note that he will have unfettered opportunity to cross-examine witnesses. And it's my recommendation that the board allow him to proceed at this time. And if the court directs us, we will certainly abide by whatever directive the court gives us. But at this time, this is what we've come up with, and this is the best we can do under the circumstances. And my recommendation is that we proceed.
Okay. I accept that recommendation. Mr. Liston, please proceed.
As long as Mr. Jackson isn't implying that I am giving my blessing to this proceeding by cross-examining, and there are other people who I don't represent who are being shut out of this altogether.
Mr. Liston.
In addition to that, I have clients who have been told, clients have been told, they can't speak at all. So you're telling me that I can't call my client as a witness to put his objections on the record?
There's nothing that would have prevented...
That's what your administrator told my client.
Mr. Liston, you're an attorney. There's nothing that would have prevented you from bringing clients to your office and putting them on your equipment and having them testify like I've done on my applications. So let's just proceed.
My office isn't big enough to hold 18 people, Mr. Jackson.
Mr. Liston, please let me finish. I believe that your proceeding with cross-examination has legal consequences, and I will assert those at the appropriate time if we need to. Maybe the board will reject this application.
Okay, so what you're suggesting, Mr. Jackson, is?
Mr. Liston, I'm just... Ms. Morris, can you please mute him until I'm finished speaking? Sorry that we have to do that, but, you know, the process here, one person speaks, and then we have to respond, and you're continually interrupting, so we have to do that. You'll be unmuted at the appropriate time. I respectfully submit there's a process here. You're... We've had the opportunity to have people heard, and objections been voiced, and you haven't even really started. So let's see how this goes, and then the chips will fall where they will. And please, you know, discontinue interrupting and speaking over people. It's even more difficult in this board.
Okay, I missed most of it, Mr. Jackson.
Okay, so Ms. Morris, if you can unmute him now, and then we'll proceed.
Thank you. Mr. Jackson, I apologize for fucking over you. But correct me if I'm wrong, you're indicating that by my cross-examining this witness, I am, in essence, conceding that this is a proper proceeding? And you indicated that, and that you may raise something in another form. Is that what you're indicating?
Mr. Liston, I told you that I believe your proceeding in this manner has consequences. And by availing yourself to cross-examination, I don't, I will assert that you, you know, don't have the ability on your own behalf anyway. You assert you haven't been able to cross-examine witnesses. But we don't have to have a debate over the legal merits at this time. You've made very clear you're not making any waivers or concessions on behalf of the board. And, you know, you can make, you make your objections clear. Just proceed at this time with the cross-examination.
Can you answer my question, Mr. Jackson? Are you suggesting that you're going to raise my cross-examination as a concession that this is a proper proceeding in a court proceeding? Yes or no?
Please proceed with your cross-examination.
Yes or no, Mr. Jackson?
Gentlemen, gentlemen, please wait. Please wait. Sorry, I'm eating my dinner. Mr. Jackson is not making decisions about how he's going to respond to your testimony, whether you are waiving rights or not. He has to ask us. We're not deciding litigation strategy for something that's not being litigated. I think you, Mr. Liston, have very adequately laid the foundation that you proceeding here, in your opinion, you are not waiving anything.
That's right.
And if you choose to go to the court and they give us directions about the faults of our process, certainly we'll listen to the court and abide.
It's a shame that I have to do that. You should know better, frankly. But you have, you're getting the advice you're getting. I just want to make sure that Mr. Jackson isn't trying to set me up for an argument that by cross-examining any witnesses in this case, I am waiving my right to claim that your notice is improper, that your rules are draconian and violate the due process clause of the Constitution. That's all. So, Mr. Jackson, if you want to retract what you said, I'll proceed. Why can't I speak?
Who's that? Who's talking now?
I'm sorry. I'm just going to mute everyone for a second. We were just having feedback because Mr. Doyle, Mr. Jackson, and Mr. Liston all had their mics on, and I'm not sure who was trying to speak. I heard an objection. I'm going to unmute Mr. Doyle. I'm going to unmute Mr. Liston. I'm going to let Mr. Doyle respond. Mr. Jackson, if you need to jump in, feel free to unmute when you're going to speak.
Mr. Doyle, please proceed.
To quote President Reagan, "We paid for this microphone." This is our application. We have a right to have it heard. If Mr. Liston wants to ask questions, let him ask the questions. That's his time. Court is later. He's not going to set the ground rules for this board. He's not going to dictate this board's action. They're in charge of their own actions. Whether it's questioned later on, that's something else. Tonight is a hearing. We have a witness in the box. He has the right to ask questions. If he's not going to ask questions, then he should be quiet, and we should proceed with the next question.
Well, so I'm going, Mr. Liston, I'm grouping with Mr. Doyle from a procedural standpoint. He's put on a witness. If you choose to cross-examine, please proceed. If you choose not to cross-examine, please let us know.
I'd like Mr. Jackson to tell me whether he considers my cross-examining any witnesses in this case to be a waiver of the contents of my letter.
Mr. Liston, I'm going to instruct, I'm going to instruct Mr. Jackson not to answer, not because I care what his answer is or not, but we are... Your foundation that you think this whole process is flawed, and you've laid an excellent foundation that you're, by you proceeding, you do not believe you are acquiescing to any faults in this process. You've done that. So now I'm going to give you the option. You can either cross-examine or you can not, but that is the two options. If everybody else can mute, so Mr. Liston can be heard.
Okay, I am doing this under protest based on Mr. Jackson's comments, but I will ask a few questions of Mr. Flannery.
Please proceed.
I don't see him on the screen.
I'm here.
He's under Ally.
Oh, okay. No, Terry Voight's under Ally. On my... Mr. Flannery is up in the...
You got a big screen.
Wave your hand, Mr. Flannery. Wave your hand.
I can't see him because on my screen it says, click here to change the layout or view, and it's blocking my view of Mr. Flannery.
You know what I look like.
I want to see the map. I don't want to see you.
Ally can put the map up.
Ally can put up any document you need, Mr. Liston.
Well, I'd like him to put up the map that Mr. Flannery was referring to.
A3.
Okay. All right. Mr. Flannery, when did you first get involved with this case?
Objection, irrelevant.
Why is it irrelevant? What if he got involved a week ago?
I mean... Mr. Liston, in light of Mr. Doyle's objection, what does one he got involved have to do with the merits of the application? How does that affect the coverages, et cetera, whether he was involved for one hour or 100 hours?
Well, based on his testimony, he has indicated that he is not the preparer of these plans. And I just want to know when and how much he actually worked with these plans before tonight. Maybe he's been involved for a year. I don't know.
If there's been an objection, you have to make a ruling on it. I would like to know how to answer that.
Mr. Liston, I'm going to allow your question. Brian, please answer. But I'm going to also preface this gentleman that we're moving this along tonight. So we're all in favor of due process, but we are moving this along. So please, Brian, answer the question.
I don't know the exact date, but it was at least six months ago.
Okay. And were you involved in any of the changes in the plan that were made in the last six months?
I was consulted and reviewed the plans and worked with the applicant and the other professionals with respect to changes in the plan.
Did you work with Glen Lines in connection with changes to the plans?
I worked with the engineers at New Lines, including Glen Lines.
Okay, what other engineers did you work with?
Objection, this is a continuing line and is irrelevant.
Mr. Stern, you know, I, under this format, I really don't understand the relevance of, you know, who worked on the plans. It's a, you know, they have certain setbacks, certain statistics that govern the plans. The board has to make the determination whether it's appropriate and, you know, who Mr. Flannery consulted with really should have no bearing on the board one way or the other.
Okay, Mr. Mr... We're going to, Mr. Liston.
Yes.
Allow this for another five minutes on procedure and background, then I'm going to ask you very firmly to get into the substance of your questions. Please.
Mr. Chairman, it's time table. Can I interrupt for a second?
Yes.
I feel very comfortable the way Brian presented this application. I think all my answers were addressed, and he looks pretty confident. I think all my answers were addressed, and he looks pretty confident in the way he knows this application. Maybe we can ask the other board members if they feel comfortable, and then we can move on.
Chaim, it's not... Mr. Liston's questions are not substantive. He's asking some type of procedural line of questioning.
Okay. I thought he wants to know if Mr. Brian is familiar with this application.
Mr. Liston, it was an earlier objection Mr. Liston made, and I overruled it, but I'm allowing him some leeway to explore the issue in case he wants to add that to any, you know, proceedings with the court. Mr. Liston, please proceed with the questions. Please keep them short, and then please move on to the substance.
Thank you.
And Alley, please mute everybody else.
Mr. Flannery, the plan as it presently appears on the screen, was that the plan that you first saw when you first got involved in this six months ago?
When I first got involved, there were several sketches. So no, that is not the plan that I was available when I first got involved.
Okay. And with regard to the number of parking spaces, were the number of parking spaces on the sketches?
I did not keep a list of the number of parking spaces and the various iterations.
Okay. When was the plan that's on the screen dated? What is its date?
The date of the plan is 12/12/2019.
When was it last revised?
The copy I have on the board here shows a revision date of 4/20/20.
Okay. And it's your testimony that you were involved before the first date of this plan being created? Is that correct?
That is correct.
Or you were involved on a consultant basis?
That is correct.
So you had input into the plan?
That is correct.
Okay, fine. Moving on, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Flannery, how many parking spaces are required, the ordinance for this project?
Forty-nine.
And how many do you have?
The plan, as submitted, is for eighty-two.
Okay. So you have almost double the parking that's required, is that correct?
Two times forty-nine is not eighty-two, so it's not...
I said almost two times, almost twice.
Well, twice would be ninety-eight. Eighty-two is not...
A little less. That's what I said. Let's not split hairs over eight or nine parking spaces. What was the reason your client told you they wanted to overpark this project to the point where they are requiring two variances to go into a buffer next to a residential area? What was their purpose in doing that? Did they tell you?
My client did not indicate, and I don't believe they have overparked the property. I have been familiar with schools in Lakewood for quite some time. As you heard in my testimony, this is a school that's associated with other schools, and they wanted to provide an appropriate number of parking spaces so that people coming to the school do not need to look other places to find parking opportunities.
Okay, well, so what you're saying is the parking space numbers, in your view, provided by the ordinance, are inadequate. Is that correct?
That's not what I'm saying at all.
Yes, it is.
That's what you're saying.
Excuse me, Mr. Liston. When you say yes, it is, you're testifying. Mr. Flannery answered the question. Please move on to the next question, and don't, you know...
Okay. Interject your own testimony. Thank you. Mr. Flannery, isn't it true that if you were to only comply with the ordinance in terms of numbers of parking spaces, you could eliminate at least two variances? Yes or no?
In my testimony, I've already offered...
The yes or no question has been asked.
It's not a yes or no question.
It's not?
No, it's not.
Well, then, let me rephrase it. How many parking spaces do you have beyond what the ordinance requires?
We have eighty-two. Forty-nine are required.
Okay.
We have thirty-three more than the ordinance requires.
Fine. And if you were to eliminate those parking spaces, you could do so in such a manner that it would eliminate two variances having to do with the buffer on the residential side of the property. Isn't that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And if you were to do that, you could also create a much larger playground area in an area other than the buffer where the playground is limited to passive recreation. Isn't that correct? Yes or no?
It's not a yes or no question.
Well, why don't you just try answering it yes or no?
I'm not going to do that.
Mr. Liston, let him try to answer the best he can.
You know, he... Listen, I've cross-examined Brian Flannery before.
Mr. Liston, the chair has determined that he's going to allow the witness to not answer in a yes or no manner. That's his ruling. Please proceed, Mr. Flannery.
Please repeat the question.
If you were to eliminate the parking spaces that go beyond what the ordinance requires, you've already testified you could eliminate the two variances having to do with the intrusion in the buffer. Isn't that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And could you also not redesign the parking so as to provide a larger playground area other than the playground area in the wetland buffer, which can only be passive?
I think that would require a redesign of the site. It's not like eliminating parking spaces and making a playground.
Okay. And with regard to the other variance, there's a variance that deals with a buffer intrusion on the corner of the building. Isn't that correct?
I'm not aware of any variance for... You're talking about the front setback. Is that what you're telling me about?
No, I'm not talking about the front setback. I'll get to that in a moment. Isn't there a corner of the building that if you eliminate that corner of the building, you won't violate the 20-foot buffer? As I'm looking in the plan, it's in the upper left...
That's the front, Mr. Liston.
Pardon me?
That's the front setback.
Yeah. Oh, that is a front setback.
Oh. No, where it says loading area, that's the front setback. The corner is the problem.
Right.
It's loading area.
Right, and it intrudes into the buffer. Is that correct? I'm trying to read the plan. It looks like 20-foot... I can't read it on the screen, but all right.
I may have confused the issue. I know Mr. Flannery is referencing the front setback here. I believe Mr. Liston is talking about whether or not that requires relief. I do not believe we've heard testimony from Mr. Flannery on that.
Okay. Mr. Flannery, the part of the screen that was just... That the arrow is on now, does that violate the buffer?
My testimony is no, it does not. It's a handicap access ramp, and the ordinance provides for handicap ramps to extend, project into required areas to the extent that at least three feet is provided between the... Any portion of it and a neighboring property.
All right, but if you reduce the building slightly, you could pull that handicap ramp out of that area, could you not?
There are many options that we could do.
That's a yes or no. If you were to reduce the size of the building slightly in that corner, you could get that ramp out of the buffer. Could you not?
You would have to define what slightly is.
Enough to get it out of the buffer. I'm looking... It looks like it'd have to take about maybe 10 or 11 feet off it.
My testimony is that that ramp is allowed in the buffer. There's nothing in the ordinance that prohibits it, and there is, in fact, a provision in the ordinance that permits it.
So you're not asking for a variance for that?
It's my testimony, no variance is required for that.
Okay. And what about the board engineer? Did he call a variance out on that or not? I don't have his report.
I think that's a fair question for Mr. Vogt at this time. Mr. Vogt, that area that Mr. Liston and Mr. Flannery were talking about appears to be over that line. Is that an intrusion into the buffer? Does that require a variance, or is that permitted? What is your assessment of that?
Our review indicates that we deal with encroachments within the 20-foot buffer where the property abuts residential uses and zones.
So it needs a variance?
That's our interpretation.
Okay.
So for a simple lawyer like I am, does that require a variance or not?
If it's an encroachment within a 20-foot setback from a residentially zoned or occupied property line, our interpretation is yes, it's an encroachment.
Okay, so you agree with Mr. Liston's interpretation?
I agree with the interpretation. I'm going to add a caveat. With numerous other applications, there is a remedy in the ordinance that talks about compensating with landscaping and vertical buffer where the horizontal buffer is not achieved. And that's something that's typically looked by the board.
Terry, where is that in your report?
I am reading from under zoning, the very bottom of page three, zoning comment three. A buffer variance is required from section 18906A of the UDO. 24 wide buffers required for residential uses and zones. Screening should be proposed to justify the required buffer relief.
So, Brian, if I can interject, Mr. Liston. Brian, can you respond to that section of Terry's report?
A section of Terry's report, when I read it, indicates the 20-foot buffer along the property line, and it doesn't specifically say the handicap ramp. So my testimony with respect to the parking, because if you look at section 18-906, Republican Private Schools, it says buffer requirements 20 feet, and then it goes on to say what a buffer is. It never says that handicap ramps can't be in there. It does specifically say in 18906B, parking is not permitted in any required buffer. So clearly, the intent is parking is not required in any buffer. They felt that the ordinance didn't specify things that weren't allowed in a buffer, so they specifically said parking is not required. It was not permitted in any required buffer. And I think if they felt the same way about handicap ramps, they would have indicated that because section 18-818, projections into required yards, A2 says handicap ramps may project into a required setback. However, the portion of the ramp where the floor elevation exceeds three feet above finished grade may not be closer to three feet from the property line. So my opinion would be handicap ramp does not require relief. To the extent the board feels that it requires relief, we would request that relief. The testimony that I gave with respect to the remainder of the buffer would be applicable to that. And as indicated in Terry's report, and as Terry just indicated, it ends with screening should be proposed to justify the required buffer relief. And screening has been proposed to justify the buffer relief. And my testimony was that the applicant is willing to add any additional planting and fencing that is requested by the board or any reasonable requests from a neighbor.
So, Chairman... I'm sorry, Mr. Flannery. Mr. Liston's question started with, you know, could you move that area? Could you move that out of that, so it's on the other side of that buffer line? I'm not saying whether it needs relief or not, and I think his question's a fair one. How many feet does that corner project over the line?
I think his original estimate of about 11 feet. So if we took 11 feet off the building, there would be no handicap ramp in the buffer.
And what kind of violence would that do to the application, to take 11 feet? And would you have to take it off the whole building, or only where that corner goes over the edge?
We would have to take it off the whole building, and it would lose two classrooms on each floor. And my opinion and my testimony, based on the ordinance which I just quoted, is it's not a violation of the buffer. There's nothing in the UDO that says handicap ramps cannot be...
We've already gone over this. We don't have to repeat it. Now, Mr. Liston, please proceed.
Mr. Liston, before you jump in, so Brian, are structures allowed in that buffer? You tell me what's not... You know, I don't accept the argument that just because one thing's specified, everything else is allowed. So are structures allowed in that buffer?
Well, clearly, I don't... It's not specified, but a building would certainly not be allowed. And if the ordinance didn't have a section which allows the projection of handicap ramps, the ordinance and the intention of it is clear that these handicap ramps are inherently beneficial, and that they should be given special provisions. And the provision that's in the ordinance is it's allowed to encroach into setbacks as long as where it's three feet or higher, it's at least three feet from the property line.
Mr. Stern, I mean, there's a big difference between a handicap ramp and a fire escape. Does this go up all the way to the top of the building? Does this feature go all the way up to the top of the building?
The handicap ramp comes into level two.
Is there not an elevator in the building, Brian?
There is an elevator in the building.
So why do you need a handicap ramp?
The elevator's all the way at the other side of the building, and as a safety proportion, the handicap ramp is there.
Brian, is there any way to bring the ramp forward so that's not encroaching on that 20-foot buffer?
No, there's not, because...
Or redesign it a little bit, that's more into that open area there?
Well, the... When you say the open area there...
Behind the parking lot. There's like a little square of space, a triangle of space there.
That's the space where Mr. Sable has indicated he wants to eliminate parking spaces and put a...
Behind the parking spaces, behind the parking spaces, closer to the building, closer to the ramp. There's like a little triangle of space there. If you bring the whole ramp forward and put that turnaround in that area, sort of redesign it a little bit, you could probably put it within that zone. Is that possible?
There are other ways of doing it, but it's a board decision. What I heard before from Mr. Sable is that triangle area that you're talking about, he wants to expand where the parking is, slide them back, and make a play area in there. So...
Brian, I think you should just ask for the waiver, and that's all, for the variance. Makes it easier.
Yes. Well, I indicated to the extent that the board feels that buffer relief is needed, we're requesting that buffer relief. My testimony is that the intent of the buffer is to provide, as indicated in section 803, to minimize impacts such as incompatible land uses, and that can be done with fencing and landscaping. And as indicated in Terry's report and his recommendation on zoning comment two, number three, screening should be proposed to justify the required buffer relief, and the applicant has presented screening to justify the buffer relief.
Okay, gentlemen, let's put... I want to put this issue on the shelf, and we're going to come back to it. So, Mr. Liston, please proceed with...
I'm sorry, you're breaking up, Mr. Chairman. Chairman, I didn't hear the end of your sentence.
I said, we want to put... I'd like you to proceed. I don't want to spend the next 45 minutes on this issue. I want to come back to it.
Well, that's what happens when you ask Brian a yes or no question. You got 45 minutes of... You got 45 minutes of lather.
Mr. Liston, Mr. Liston, you'll find I'm a very, very patient man and a very fair man, but I'm not allowing that.
Okay.
No ad hominem attacks, please.
Brian, the cafeteria or the room that's going to be used as a simpco hall, what is the elevation of the ceiling in that room?
What room are you saying is going to be used as a simpco hall?
The, I think it's labeled as a cafeteria, the 4,900 and some odd square foot room.
The 4,300 and some odd square foot dining room?
Yes, dining room, sorry.
The elevation difference in the school from the first floor to the second floor is 12 feet, and that incorporates the structural elements between the floors.
Okay. And how high is the ceiling in that dining room?
It would be something in the vicinity of 11 feet.
Okay. And is the reason why that is that high? If it's just a dining room? Or is it to make it more usable as a simpco hall or as a rental party space?
It's an appropriate building height for a dining room.
Okay. Sorry. All right, Brian, that dining room were to be restricted against renting it out as a simpco hall. Would you need all the extra parking spaces that you're putting in this project? Or is that why they're being put in?
You keep using the term simpco hall.
Rental hall.
Rental hall.
Hall to rent out for private parties not associated with the school.
The parking is put there for the benefit of the school. To the extent that parking is available after hours for the school for a different reason, it was not the motivating factor for the design of the site.
Okay, I didn't ask you that. I asked you whether if you were to use that dining hall, dining room, as a rental space for outside parties, it would be easier not to need the extra parking spaces you put in, isn't that correct? I mean, because you just said that it would be nice to have them there if it was a rental hall. If it's not a rental hall, then they're not really needed, are they?
I did not say it'd be nice to have them if there's a rental hall. I don't know where you heard that.
I heard that, you implied that. Oh, I believe you implied that, but-
I did not imply any such thing.
Gentlemen, can I try to maybe get to the core of the issue? And, Mr. Liston, if I could, I'd like to ask Brian one question. Would that be okay?
Sure.
So, Brian, I think my reading here is this facility is intended to have dual use, mainly as a dining room for the kids, but as an accessory use is that they would be rented out for simpcos, public events. Is that basically accurate?
Well, the site was designed for the school and the students. And to the extent that the hall, the dining room, is available to be rented out after hours, similar to every other school in Lakewood and most other towns, that's a benefit that helps the school meet its financial obligations. And that was indicated in the statement of operations-
Exactly.
-that was included in with the application. So nobody's trying to hide anything. It was made perfectly clear, the same as other schools have the availability to rent out their dining room so that it helps with the finances of the school. And the applicant has indicated if the board felt those 20 spaces would be better served as a buffer, they could be eliminated. So the fact that I'm getting questions of they're only there for the simpco hall was not my testimony, and it's different from my testimony, which said that if the board feels they don't want the 20 spaces for the school, the school is agreeable to making that part of the buffer.
Good. Well, that's what I think would be the appropriate thing, Brian, under the circumstances, but that's up to the board.
Yes.
Now, as between parking spaces, extra parking spaces and a playground, which is, does not appear as a labeled area on your plan, it's a school. Wouldn't it be better to have less parking or only the minimum amount of parking needed to satisfy the ordinance and use some of the other grounds for a playground? Wouldn't that be a better use for a school?
Well, if we're complying with the minimum requirements of the ordinance, there's no minimum requirement of the ordinance for a playground. And the administration of the school, which already has 250 students and knows the needs of the students, they feel that the boys running around and expending that energy in the back is a better solution than eliminating parking spaces and shoving a play area in the front.
Well, but that doesn't address the area that was pointed to by one of the board members with the younger kids who need more space to, with some organized recreation of a permanent nature, like swings, merry-go-round, jungle gyms, that kind of thing. Wouldn't it be better to have that than extra parking?
For little kids?
If it's a school?
Are you finished with your question so I can answer it?
Yeah, I am.
Okay, so the school administration feels differently, but if the board feels that a fenced area for the smaller children is a benefit, the school is agreeable to any reasonable request, and the school is agreeable to that request. But if you ask the school administration, who this is their business, they feel the area behind the building is sufficient.
Does this school have to be licensed by the state of New Jersey?
I don't know.
I would suggest that if it has to be licensed by the state of New Jersey, there may be a requirement for some physical education area outside the building. I'm suggesting that might be something you might want to ask your, you know, ask your client about.
Okay, Mr. Liston?
Surprised you don't know. Yes.
Mr. Liston, I very much, very much want you to get through all of your questions, but I also very much want to be in a position to hear all the testimony, have the cross-examination, have the board deliberate, and have the board vote tonight.
How late do you propose to go, Mr. Chairman?
Well, Mr., I'm going to ask you, how many more, how much longer do you think your cross-examination is going to take?
Maybe another five or 10 minutes.
That's perfect. Please proceed. And board members, if Mr. Liston can finish up in the next five to 10 minutes, we may have to go over, but I think it would be best for us to go a little bit longer than nine to wrap this up. Please proceed, Mr. Liston.
Mr. Stern, I'm sorry to interrupt. I did text Mr. Gazarovski just a moment ago to let him know we're not going to be opening the second application tonight.
Yep.
If the board could take two minutes to maybe carry that application to next week, I think that would be a good idea.
How do we do that? Is that motion?
From the board and Mr. Jackson can make the announcement that second item onto my calendar.
Can someone please make a motion?
Are you off mute?
Everybody's muted, but we need something to do, maybe make a carry back.
Hello, I'm here.
Hi, Ron.
Hello, how are you?
The board is just discussing carrying the Somerset Walk-
I was in train for Mr. Liston's cross-examination. I fell asleep for a second, but-
Professional courtesy, please, sir.
Yeah, that's because you're so old, Ron.
I'm being courteous.
Ron, we know it's fast your bedtime.
Gentlemen, please go to the bar and have your chit chat later. Can I have a motion to carry SP 2180A to the next meeting?
Mr. Chairman, may I interrupt a moment?
Who's that?
This is A. Penzer. I moved something from the August 25th meeting, which I and Mr. Gazarovski were on. May I respectfully request that it be placed on to next Thursday, next week's Tuesday's meeting? That was the one I called you about, and I sent Ron a notice that we were postponing it, we were tabling indefinitely. So it should be an opening there with your kindness if we could be heard next Tuesday, I would appreciate it.
Well, that would be up to Ms. Ally Morris, who is power behind the throne.
So that's why I wanted to just suggest it, and I apologize for interrupting you. Forgive me, Ally, and forgive me, Mr. Stern, for interrupting. Just a suggestion.
No apology needed. Ally, does that work?
That is my recommendation for next Tuesday, yes. And typically, I think Mr. Jackson said that's a scheduling matter, and we don't necessarily need a motion. I'm not sure if he just makes that announcement.
So let's just make an announcement, move on, so we can get back to Mr. Liston's question.
Is everybody on the board in favor of carrying SP 2180A to the next meeting, which is what day is it, Ally?
Yes.
August 25th, next Tuesday.
Okay, it appears by unanimous consensus, everybody, member of the public, be advised that number two on tonight's calendar, SP 2180A Congregation Somerset Walk, has been adjourned and will be heard next, will be heard Thursday, August 25th, 2020, 6 o'clock in this virtual meeting format. There will be no further notices.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Penzer. Mr. Counsel, please proceed with your- Mr. Liston, are you there? Mr. Liston?
You're good, Mr. Liston. I apologize, I had muted you, I'm sorry.
Well, I can understand why. Can we have the map back up there?
Fine, but there was no announcement made about no further notices.
Mr. Penzer's speaking again.
I believe I did make that announcement. I said there will be no further notices.
I apologize, I didn't hear it. Forgive me.
But if I didn't, now I'm saying it, so it's been said twice.
Okay. Ally, is this the most up-to-date map that we're looking at here?
Yeah, that's fine, it's up now.
Yes.
Is it up to date? This is the one from April?
This is the most current that I have. It's revised through July 29.
Okay. There is one other variance, Mr. Flannery, having to do with the front setback. Where is that? Is that by the loading area?
Yes.
Mr. Flannery?
Yes, it is.
Okay, you want to point that out, please?
I think Ally can put the-
Okay, and what is the requirement?
50 feet.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Five zero feet.
Okay, and what is, what is being provided?
In that one particular triangle, it's a maximum of 14.9 feet over that for a setback of 35.11.
Okay, is there any way that the building can be adjusted to eliminate that?
As I indicated in my testimony, we could put an angle on that corner of the building and eliminate that. And what that would do is it would take 225 square feet out of a classroom on one floor, a stockroom on another floor, and the prayer room on the third floor. So it would be minimal impact on the function of the school. It would also be minimum impact on the desirability of the aesthetics of the building as you drive down the road. It's not going to look very different, but it would create additional costs for the construction of the building.
So it's an economic matter, really, right?
Well, it's a hardship because of the geometry of the property, where we have all of the property lines and the wetland and buffer line at different angles. So to do a typical rectangular school, you either need de minimis relief for a small area, or you need to make the building smaller and accommodate less students in this inherently beneficial use.
Well, you keep using the term inherently beneficial use. It's a permitted use in this zone, isn't it?
It's permitted, it's still inherently beneficial.
Well, the inherently beneficial use is a use that is not permitted and is permitted because it is that inherently beneficial use. That's a variance term in terms of meeting the positive criteria. I understand that, but it's permitted in this zone. So that really doesn't apply here. It's a permitted use, the same as a residence.
Is that a question or is this a statement?
That's a question. Isn't that right? Question mark.
I don't think there's anything wrong with calling it an inherently beneficial use, which indicates that it's a use that provides it to the general public.
Well, but it's unnecessary because it's a permitted use, isn't that correct? So you're just gilding the lily a bit, aren't you?
Is that a question?
It is, and I think it calls for a yes or no answer.
Yeah, it does.
I'm not gilding the lily.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
But with a rather simple redesign, and I'm talking about all the variance relief you're seeking, with minimal loss of square footage and with minimal redesign, you can become an as-of-right application, can't you?
It could be designed with very little loss of the building to be an as-of-right application, correct?
Yeah, right, well, I'm surprised you're not doing that. Why?
Because the relief that's being requested meets the criteria for variance relief in the municipal land use law, and it provides a better functioning building for this school, which provides a benefit to the general public.
Well, okay, but it could be redesigned and eliminate all the variances.
We're going over the same thing multiple times. He's already answered that.
Two of the three variances directly impact the residential area. Isn't that correct?
When you say two of the three variances, what variances are you referring to?
I'm referring to the buffer intrusion, the parking in the buffer, and the handicap ramp.
Like, known, the handicap ramp has been changed, there's an elevator in the middle of the building, so that variance is no longer sought.
Okay, so the handicap ramp is going to come out of that buffer?
The applicant can change the plan to eliminate that handicap ramp.
Okay. And if the applicant were to change the plan to eliminate the parking spaces and provide a full buffer along the residential area, you could do that as well, right?
The applicant has offered to do that.
Okay, well-
That's up to the plan board.
Okay, but it could be up to the applicant if the applicant just said, you know what, we're going to withdraw our application for those variances, similar to what you're doing with the handicap ramp, and pull those parking spaces out. And then there's no intrusion into the residential buffer at all, isn't there?
If those 20 parking places are eliminated, there's no intrusion into the buffer.
Okay, because you're already going to eliminate the handicap ramp, is that correct?
We're already going to change that so that that doesn't encroach in the 20-foot buffer.
Okay. All right, that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Doyle, do you want to do any redirect?
I would say by redirect for the end of all and any further cross-examination.
Okay, so, Ally, do we have any questions from the public? Or John?
I have quite a number. I can start with those if the board's ready.
Please. How many is quite a many, quite a few?
12, and some of them are very long.
Oh, Zoe. Okay.
Can we make a minute out of virtual?
What was that?
Time, I think we have to keep moving.
Mr. Jackson, before I start on the, I just said this first one is from Mr. Mr. Jackson, before I start on the, I just said this first one is from Mr. Stryker, who is one of Mr. Liston's clients. I believe Mr. Stryker is an independent here and also has a professional with him who he wants to give testimony. I'm not sure if the board wants to hear from Mr. Liston and read the email and hear from Mr. Stryker, or how we want to limit that.
You know, that's a tricky one, and I would leave that to Mr. Stryker and the board's discretion. What I think the balance that has to be struck is, Mr. Liston has a practical matter where he can't call his client to testify in this format, or he hasn't arranged to do that because he said he couldn't have 11 or 17 people in his office. So normally, you wouldn't let someone speak while their attorney is making their case. Under the circumstances, I think it would be appropriate to have his comments read because they're in the nature of testimony as well. But that's your discretion, Mr. Stern.
I'm sorry, I don't think you heard me, Mr. Jackson. This gentleman who's emailed on the screen is also present in the meeting under the name Alan. So I didn't want to read this if Mr. Stern is also...
He said, what about the municipality?
He's in this meeting, and I don't want to read this if he also is choosing to speak. He's in this meeting under the name Alan. So if he wants to clarify if he'd like to speak...
So it's Alan? Why is Alan in?
Yeah, how did Alan get in?
I'm not losing, but who's that?
He asked me for the email for his professional to be able to testify, who is here. I think it was Mr. Horner who is here as well. I'm sorry, I don't recall if he was a planner, or an engineer, or a traffic expert, but Mr. Horner is here, as well as Alan, as well as Mr. Liston. And I didn't want to read an email and then also have Alan listen.
So why, why don't we look? Alan, what is that background noise?
I'm sorry.
Much better. Could we ask Alan to give a summary of his email? And let's let him speak.
Alan, I can see you're there, but we can't hear you. Are you looking to testify?
Mr. Stern, this letter is not that lengthy. I recommend that you just read the letter and then have him testify.
Okay.
As a neighbor, 604 Apollo Road, and second house from the corner, I would like to voice my opposition to the proposed application that includes a simca hall, a rentable hall, or non-school-related events, as indicated on the letter of statement of operation by the school. The building is being built in a residential neighborhood attached to an R-12 zone neighborhood. R-12 is designed to have peaceful, quiet living, and for that, we pay a premium price. The applicant proposes a 4,200-square-foot room in the basement first floor, a 4,200-square-foot room that can be used for simca hall. As in the past meeting, the board would require 140 parking spots, based on the square foot per person, Janus, 15 square feet per person. This project proposes only 83 parking spots, way too little for such a big crowd. Don't know who's echoing, so I can't stop it, I'm sorry. The overflow parking will land on Apollo Road, making the nice, quiet R-12 zone extremely congested, just so the board understands overflow parking can't park on Squankum Road as there is no parking sign there. So the only place to park would be Apollo Road, and that would make the residential block very congested. Coming home at night and needing to squeeze through all the parked cars on both sides of the road is not what we expected when we bought houses in a R-12 zone. In addition, where will the buses park? The school has their own buses and currently park on their own site. Parking buses on site will eliminate some more parking spots that will equal more cars on Apollo Road, more congested. I'm requesting that this should, that should this building be approved, it should include an exclusion and be put into the resolution to exclude any simca room, hall, party, non-school event, or anything that will create a big crowd. Making limits of how many people can attend has no way of enforcing it, and approval with limits should not be granted as it gives the right to make a simca, but in no way does it protect the neighbors. As in the past, the board has not been giving approvals to fall in a residential area without enough parking. We hope the board respects the residential neighborhood and will do the same this time. Thank you and thanks for reading. P.S. We have a professional engineer to testify online that we hope the board will give for Dave from Horner and Cantor the opportunity to voice his testimony. I would also hope that I can voice my opposition, as an email doesn't justify, but guess, I'm not given the chance. Thanks, Alan Stryker, Farron Builders. Should we ask Mr. Horner? I'm sorry, I think it was, should we ask Dave to give his testimony now? Is Mr. Liston going to walk him through that? Or should I just continue with the other public comments that I have at this time?
Continue with all the other public comments and try to get a synthesis and a sense if there's common themes. I want it to be that we've read all of them, and then if we have time, God willing, we'll let Alan or Mr. Horner testify, and then I want to wrap this up. So please, please speak as fast as you can, this is intelligent.
I'm going to read all 12. I'm gonna make sure that everyone else is muted, we're getting a little bit of background noise. Okay, this is the second one. I have been asked to represent Herman and Malty Borhan, owners of properties on Apollo Road and Mars Avenue adjacent to or near the proposed development. I object to the manner in which the board is conducting the hearing, which does not permit live questioning of the applicant or the applicant's witnesses. My submission of comments by email in accordance with the board's meeting notice is not a waiver of our right to challenge the meeting format. My clients object to the proposed development because it fails to provide adequate buffering between their properties and the project. During the last several months, the property owner has removed numerous trees, possibly in violation of the township's ordinances and D E P regulations. My clients have requested but have not received adequate assurances that the trees will be replaced. In addition, they have requested that a fence be installed around the subject property. Additional objections may be made after the applicant's presentation. Thank you from Larry Lloydman Esquire. Mr. Lloydman was also given the opportunity to join the meeting. He is here muted at the moment. In that vein, I will just continue reading these so that we can get through the public comments.
I think it's important to know who they represent. Where do they live? What's the addresses of these properties?
Mr. Lloydman, are you there?
I'm here.
Hi. We have a question from Mr. Sable. I do see you represent Herman and Borhan. Do they have an address?
Yes, I think it's explained here. I represent individual, they are owners individually of various properties on both Apollo Road and both of those streets are the streets in back of the proposed project.
Chaim, it's a two or near. I think we got to keep moving, Chaim.
No, I need to know if these are the, any of the five houses on Mars, which, I guess, back to this property, is any of these your clients?
I believe so. I don't have, I don't have the exact addresses with them, sorry. But I believe that they do back up to this property, yes.
Okay, I'm going to continue with comment number four if we're ready for that. I strongly feel that it is imperative for this school to build a new building so that the children have enough space to be able to learn properly. It is important for this school to be in this location because it's in town, close to where many students live. I don't think it's beneficial for the kids to have to sit on the bus for an hour to and from school. They spend, I'm sorry, I'm trying to mute someone. They spend enough time in school. When school's over, they should be able to get home right away. The school does a substantial amount of extracurricular activities, plus different programs, all to boost the kids' learning, self-esteem, and all of this costs money. The school does whatever is necessary to benefit their students, but there's some at a heavy cost that tuition alone cannot cover from Moshe O'Stryker on Bela Boulevard. Public comment number five. Dear Planning Board, congregation told us Yakov Yosef is a great school and they definitely need a new state-of-the-art building so the kids can get a proper education. School's being in town so kids don't have to travel an hour on long bus rides to get there. A simca hall is a great way for extra funding for all the school and all its extra activities. Public comment number six. I'm sorry, I didn't read the name on that last one, though it was on the screen. And it's Alan Spielman of Bela Boulevard. The next comment is from Yisrael M. Waldman. He said, dear members of the Lakewood Planning Board, your service to our town is very much appreciated. It's an honor to write an email to special people like yourself.
I like this letter.
As a parent of the subject school, I hereby ask the board members of the board to do everything in your ability to make this beautiful project a reality. The kids are looking forward to move into the new building, and your approval today will make a positive impact on thousands of families in Lakewood for the years to come. The school purchased this parcel of land in 2013 with a vision to be within walking distance for the Hasidic population that it serves. In the same time, it is not on a quiet residential block, so it will be able to operate and grow without altering a neighborhood's dynamics. The administrator of the school, Rabbi Shemanowitz, is already sitting with architects and engineers to prepare nice plans for five years. His goal was to satisfy the neighbors, conform with code, and avoid asking for variances. His hard work is truly noticeable if he focused on every detail of the site plan and floor plan. The facade is also breathtaking. It is self-understood that if the planning board members were not empowered to grant certain types of variances, we could have avoided lengthy board meetings and simply deny all applications unless they comply with every ordinance in the code. It is with this in mind that government bodies carefully select individuals that have proper judgment to approve variances that are needed. These responsibilities also include to be able to detect when opposition from neighbors should be disstratated due to personal or emotional issues, et cetera. Regards, Yisrael Waldman, Lakewood resident, proud parent of the subject school, and business owner. Public comment number seven. I am writing, as a neighbor and friend of the school, I strongly believe the school needs and should be entitled to a new school building to best suit the needs of the children to learn in a comfortable environment. These are basics that everyone understands. It is imperative that the school be built on Squankum Road in its current location as to ensure less traffic and easy traffic flow during dismissal and drop off. Needless to say, as every other school in town, as well as my many synagogues, income from social halls and banquet halls are crucial to their survival. I count on it to simply cover the bills. As with every other event hall in town, there are ways to assure that parking in the surrounding area, be it residential or commercial, are kept to a minimum. I strongly support the school and hope they get the approvals they need. This is from S. Niger. Public comment number eight. I'm sorry, Samuel Niger for that email. As a neighbor living in Whispering Woods, 38 Bela Drive, I would love to see the approval of the new building, which will beautify our neighborhood and enhance the entrance of our town. We will all benefit from this project, as there are no other simca hall in our neighborhood with the consent of many neighbors who support this project. Simca Ginsburg. Public comment number nine. Dear honorable board members, thank you for the time you serve to benefit our town and community. Fair disclosure, I am a neighbor and parent of the above mentioned school. Regardless of the application, I must emphasize that the school staff is professional, caring, and most important, makes a huge difference in our children's lives. They define the word "education" in the highest levels that exist. However, with that said, they are limited and confined within their current space. Their current space is small, but also at times dangerous with the amount of people, children, that are spending their days in that combined space. It is long overdue that a long-lasting solution should be made possible. That way, they can further flourish and reach even higher and greater educational heights. As parents who live a block away, as well as most of the parent body who live on this side of the town, having the kids nearby isn't about convenience, but rather safety and sanity for us, parents and children. We understand and recognize the challenge posed on neighboring property owners, but know the school administration. The school administration are a wholeheartedly, ready, willing, and able to make arrangements to minimize those challenges, while understanding that no one is going away and neither can have it their way. The midway compromise to mitigate any neighboring concerns is the way to handle the challenges imposed by this project. The school facing Squankum Road is one solution that avoids neighboring properties having a school on their front lawn. The school being located on Squankum Road helps parents in a centrally-located location while not impacting any residential areas. As you are well aware, the community is growing, while school slot availability isn't meeting the demands, the school must be financially sound in order to carry itself. Having the ability to produce income from all angles is viable for the sustainability and longevity of the institution. Limiting that availability is a possible financial death sentence for this wonderful and amazing educational institution. We hope and ask for your consideration, mercy, and mostly for your kind wisdom to improve that application. Did you have any questions, comments, or likely to be here in person? Don't hesitate to contact me. Mordecai and Hannah Shapiro of 63 Arosa Hill.
You're doing great, Ally.
Dear board members, my name is Simon Kaufman. I reside at 37 Arosa Hill. My son, Neil Fumiel Kaufman, nine years old, is a student and congregation told us Yakov Yosef. I can truthfully and wholeheartedly say what a wonderful school this is, the dedicated staff, the professional administration, the devotion of the principles to the parents and children, the one-on-one personal treatment. No wonder that in these few years that the school is operating, they outgrew their current capacity by far, and every school year needs to add on trailer after trailer. This current setup that school is in is clearly coming at a cost of jeopardizing the maximum potential growth of our children without giving them the needed space that children require in this century. As a proud Lakewood resident, home and business owner in the historic town of Lakewood, I kindly ask you to grant congregation told us Yakov Yosef the permission to construct the building as requested in application SP 2374 and grant them the variance that they are requesting to be able to proceed without any delay to the beautiful brick construction of the entrance of Lakewood when coming in from the north. I would like to add, as an actively involved father with the school, and very well aware of how accommodating the administration of the school was towards the surrounding neighbors, trying to reach a fair agreement that their concerns are properly addressed, I trust that any requests that the board will find as a fair request will be respected and honored with truly Simon Kaufman. Public comment 11. Dear members of the board, first and foremost, I would like to express gratitude for all the time and effort you are investing in servicing and bettering our town and the community. It's truly appreciated. I am writing this letter in regard to application SP 2374. I am a grateful parent of three sons that are students attending this wonderful school. My sons are being cared for by the most dedicated staff, the devotion and personal approach. Each of my sons are growing exponentially in the warm and professional environment. Additionally, I am genuinely grateful and impressed with the level of education in all areas. The current situation the school is facing regarding its limited spaces worriesome. They cannot continue to provide for each student while struggling to deal with the past and expected growth. It is concerning to think that our younger children will soon join the school, will be unable to have their needs met. They have outgrown their capacity for a while and have put in tremendous effort to stay afloat. Statistically, location plays a major role, their current role. Their current location is not only ideal, but imperative for its success. Although we are of the minority of students living in the south side of town, we are benefiting of its current location. There are many side routes that can be taken, thereby avoiding immense traffic during rush hour. This enables our children to get to school on time and excel in their studies. It would be very much appreciated to have this application approved. This will enable congregation told us Yakov to continue to provide for our children and improve its current physical conditions with much appreciation, Joseph and Judy Kaufman of 32 and... And public comment 12. Dear board members, my name is Leah Spiegel, and I'm a resident of Lakewood, New Jersey, 49 Whispering Pine Lane. I live across the street of the Set Apes, making me grateful to them for bringing life onto our side of town. The school is a well-run institution with law-abiding staff and students alike, and many of the students attending are relatives of mine. I am told they are proposing to build a building to accommodate the growing needs of what was once a budding elementary school and has doubled and tripled in growth in the recent years. The children require and deserve space for recreation as well as for studying, and a large, comfortable building will surely benefit the students as well as their devoted staff. Please grant them this application so that they make amends with their plans without any further delay. Leah Spiegel, 49 Whispering Pines Way. That is the last email that I have. I did also receive, I'm sorry, I have a couple emails. The applicant emailed me directly with the revised architectural plans showing the removal of the handicap ramp on the left side of the building, so that is not shown here any longer. I have another email in here, I'm sorry, give me just a minute. Alan Stryker, if the choice is me or my professional to testify, I would request that David from Horner and Cantor. We can hear from David in just a moment. Larry Lloydman said, please be advised, the clients own the following properties, 606 Mars, 601 Apollo, 610 Mars, 611 Mars, 609 Mars, and 612 Mars.
Okay, gentlemen, let me make a suggestion. It's 9:09. We could have a plenary hearing and hear from everybody, but I have a feeling a lot of the testimony is going to be restating what we've just heard. It seems to me the core issue is the impact of the dining hall, which will be used as a simca hall on the neighboring properties. So what I'd like to hear from Mr. Liston and, and Mr. Doyle, tell us about the negotiations that were attempted. Where did you agree? And where did the, where did the negotiations fall down, fall apart?
Mr. Stern, I don't know if that's...
Appropriate?
I don't know. Yeah, I mean, the board has to make a decision. I don't know if it's a good idea to get into what their negotiations were. I'd like to hear what Mr. Doyle and Mr. Liston think about that. Mr. Liston, you get to pick who gets to weigh in on it first. You were Mr. Doyle. You have to hit mute, unmute.
Unmute.
Push your spacebar down, that'll work.
There you go.
Got it. All right, I think it is inappropriate.
Okay. All right, that's all we need to hear. So I think if one of them thinks it's inappropriate, then we shouldn't...
It's inappropriate? Okay, I'm just trying to get to the bottom line.
But you know what? I think it is fair, and I'll ask Mr. Liston this. Mr. Liston, you've asked question as intimated, if the parking spaces were removed and the building was moved, or the buffer, or, you know, that, that... Would that... Would that satisfy your client if this bill, if two applications were made to be fully conforming, if the applicant were able to do it?
It would certainly solve the variance problem. I don't know if it would satisfy all my clients, but it would certainly make it a much cleaner application.
All right, so let me go over to Mr. Doyle. Mr. Doyle, you've heard what the concerns are. Is a modification to this application feasible, where you could eliminate some parking, move that facility that's in the buffer, and, you know, go on from there? Is that something that your client could do?
To do away with the... Acknowledging that it loses 20 parking spaces and creates a buffer here, they've already taken care of the elevator ramp. With respect to the 35 feet versus the 50 feet, Mr. Liston makes the point, well, it would be a cleaner application. We'd get rid of the variances. If you take a look at the map, and it shows the 50-foot line, you would have a building that, instead of coming, like most buildings do, through a corner, it would intercept that corner and all of a sudden have to veer and then veer again. Whether... Nobody is complaining about it. So I think that one's in a different category. What's interesting was Mr. Liston's response, well, it would be a cleaner application. He didn't say...
So Mr. Doyle was born at night, but not last night. Is that what you're saying?
I'm sorry.
You were born at night, but not last night. You heard what...
So there is nothing illegal, improper about a simca hall. Simca halls are in most, if not all, schools, and the members on the board know that better than I do. But that's what the client testified to also. So what we're being held cross to is some nominal variances that we said we would resolve to the 35 feet that hasn't been really parked on. But what we're being charged with is to get rid of a commonplace sensible accessory use that is not, that is not unpermitted, but is allowed, authorized, and generally done.
All right, I hear what you're saying, and I was just trying to do what, you know, I think what Mr. Stern was suggesting, to see if there's a middle ground here, which I think is very practical. I just learned something this weekend when I was making a bid for a house that I didn't get, by the way. I was asked to make my highest and best offer, because there were multiple offers. Is there an application, a revision to your application that your client could be satisfied with that could allay some of the concerns, but that would be, you know, this is our breaking point. We think this is our best plan. We think this addresses the concerns of the neighbors. Any modifications that you would want to make, that you would submit to the board at this time, that would be a, I think, to paraphrase what Mr. Liston said, a cleaner application? And would you be willing to do that? And if so, what is it?
Of me? I... Flannery has already indicated that with the buffer and the plantings and the fencing, the building, everybody says there's a need for schools. The school itself doesn't violate any ordinances. So what is being asked of us is to do something that's essential to the school. It has a cafeteria. That cafeteria is based upon a legitimate number of students times the number of feet, square feet necessary per student. And so, the 4,239 square foot dining hall is appropriate for the expected size of this growing community that needs a school this size. To the degree that they want to use that necessary permitted typical use in the evening for limited parties, as it was generally conceded in your earlier testimony, it's not big enough for a wedding. So it is by definition a smaller simca hall for less populated attendance. When you look at it in that way, and you know there could have been 82 parking places, probably spaces able to be put in the bus lanes, as long as it didn't get in the way of the fire lane, because the school buses are going to be parked at home where the bus drivers live, then it all works in harmony. We end the night 10:30, a not inappropriate time, and we have a lesser-sized but usable dining hall for evening use, consistent with what other schools do and what some of the letters, particularly from the Whispering Pines neighborhood, which may be not quite as near as the five neighbors behind us, but is relatively very close.
So, Mr. Doyle, I think, you know, if I read between the lines, that some of the concerns are from adjoining neighbors, or the buffers, the proximity, but I think this 4,200, 4,100, 4,500 square foot room is a concern. You've indicated that it's not big enough to be used for, I'll call it, large-scale weddings. Mr. Flannery, I have a question for you. This dining hall, as it's been referred to, what would the occupancy be in a room like that if it were to be set with tables? I'm not talking about how many people could stand in there if it were vacant, but if it were to be used for some kind of a party or some kind of event, and you set up tables and people were to sit down. Just to put it in perspective, you're an architect, you do these things. How many people the 4,500 square foot room actually hold?
It's 4,369. So at one per 15 square feet, 290 people.
And what type of events for a, this, I understand is going to be a religious school. What type of events would hold that, would, you know, would be suitable for that number of people? You know, I imagine a large wedding, that more people come to a wedding than that. But what kind of events would that be capable of hosting?
You're asking a Flannery and a Doyle this question.
They've done enough applications here where I think Mr. Flannery knows more than...
Typical would be an engagement party.
All right, John, we have, we did a digression here. I think we do need to listen to Mr. Connor. Or is it Horner? I'm sorry, who is it?
Horner.
Horner, Mr. Horner, I'm sorry. So...
I also have one email that I missed, and I apologize to that member.
The email first, Ally, and then let's hear from Mr. Horner.
This is from Tully Ouch, Lakewood Planning Board, honored board members. With regard to the variance application by Toldos Yakov Yosef, as an owner of immediate neighboring property located at 603 Apollo Road, I hereby submit the following in strong opposition to the above variance application. The 20-foot buffer required by law is specifically designed for such instances to protect surrounding neighbors when a school or another non-residential entity intends to erect a behemoth three-story building that is totally not in sync with the quiet residential artful character of the surrounding properties. The request for a variance by the school defeats the entire purpose and intent of this law. Board members should take into account that applicant illegally and deliberately cleared away the existing buffer of trees without obtaining necessary permits in order to create new tracks on the ground. Justify the application for those variance for a reduced buffer. For the board to approve this application, it would essentially be rewarding the applicant for the illegal and deliberate removal of the long-existing buffer. Applicant's statement of operation indicates the inclusion of a rentable hall for outside functions and events. As is well known, such halls are used primarily in the evening with events running well into the night. Without the required buffer as mandated by the zoning code, the light beams from vehicles parking within the buffer zone, as specifically noted in the application, would shine directly into my home disturbing our family's sleep. This buffer is an absolute necessity to protect the quality of life of my family, as is the intent of the law. The applicant's request for a setback variance to just 35 feet from Squonkum Road should be considered in light of the fact that development of 96 new homes was just approved to be constructed directly across from the school property, adjacent to the JCP&L property. The board should bear in mind the steady heavy flow of traffic exiting that proposed development directly onto Squonkum Road, right at the very same spot of the school property entrance with its own exit and entry traffic generated by a building with 33 classrooms and a 4,200 square foot event hall with no designated turning lane. Reducing the property's step back at such a critical point would have a devastating impact on the visibility, safety, and flow of traffic of this very critical traffic artery, which has a speed limit of 50 miles per hour. I trust that the board will consider these important factors when reviewing this application, and the board will see fit to uphold the zoning requirements in light of these critical circumstances. From Naftali Ouch. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I might have a more specific answer to your question, if you would want me to say that now, or if you would want me to wait until after the gentleman who's an engineer, and I don't know whether he's being called by Mr. Liston or not.
I think he's by an independent. So let's do this. Mr. Horner, I'm going to want you to speak next, and you're going to let everybody know who has retained you. But I want all of us here to start thinking about the point that you're almost forcing the board to make a binary decision. A binary decision is either zero or one. And generally speaking, binary decisions aren't very good in the long term for either party. So what I think you're hearing from us, and whether it's appropriate or not, I'm going to say it, we need to have a position that allows the school to do what it's trying to do, including having perhaps what they can do, which is having simca, without impacting adversely on the neighbors. And I don't know what that is, but that's the goal. With that in mind, Mr. Horner, please proceed.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, Mr. Horner is an expert. He's being called by someone. It was indicated he's being called by Mr. Stryker. Mr. Stryker is already represented by Mr. Liston, so I don't know that Mr. Stryker gets to call an expert, or if it's Mr. Liston's witness.
Well, we're doing it anyways, John, so let's proceed. Go ahead, Mr. Horner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate you allowing me to speak with this application.
I didn't mean to be rude, John, but we got to get moving. I apologize.
All right, Mr. Horner, please raise your hand. Do you swear from testimony to give before the board the truth, all truth, nothing but truth?
I do.
In what capacity are you testifying this evening?
I am a traffic engineer, a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey.
And you are appearing on whose behalf?
My client is Mr. Alan Stryker.
Okay, all right. So what do you want to advise the board this evening? Well, Mr. Doyle, do you have any objection or...
Here is where he went to school, how long he's been doing it, has he been recognized?
Do you want to labor the record with that, or you think when he says he's an engineer, that's good enough?
Have you testified in Lakewood before, Mr. Horner?
I have not, but I think it's worth putting my qualifications on the record for the purpose of the record, so I'd be happy to do that.
You know, Mr. Stern, there's an awkwardness to this, because people are supposed to have attorneys when they come before the board and like...
You broke my jaw. Say it again.
Never mind, let's just proceed. We'll get past that. Mr. Horner, what are your credentials?
Okay, I have a bachelor in civil engineering degree from University of Delaware. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. I am principal of a firm of Horner and Cantor Associates. I'm a traffic engineer, have been for 32 years, have testified and been recognized as an expert before many municipalities in New Jersey. I have not testified in Lakewood Township previously.
Mr. Stern, are you satisfied with his qualifications to serve as an expert in the field of engineering with a specialty in traffic?
Yes, I am.
Thank you.
Go ahead, proceed, Mr. Horner. Now, Mr. Liston, is he part of your delegation, Mr. Horner? No, he's not. Because I have, I've never met him, and I've never spoken with him. Because he's retained apparently by your client. He's representing the same client that you're representing. So it's just, there's an awkwardness that you're going to then cross him. And when you're really representing the person who is calling him as a witness, it's just kind of a weird setting. So let's just see how it unfolds. Go ahead, Mr. Horner.
All right, thank you. The purpose of my testimony is, we did not hear any traffic engineering testimony tonight from the applicant. There was a traffic impact study submitted. My client was concerned about traffic, retained me to take a look at the traffic study and to review the traffic conditions and to provide testimony with regard to that. So I would be happy to do that. So basically, in general, the traffic impact study that was provided, I find to be extremely inadequate for the purpose of informing and giving comfort level to the board about the traffic conditions in and around the site. And I haven't heard any testimony today.
Mr. Horner, what my concern is, now you're commenting like a lawyer would on what somebody's proofs were. Just give your, give your traffic testimony, give your analysis, and please refrain from commenting on the veracity or adequacy of another witness's testimony, because I'm an attorney, and I just don't think that's appropriate. But if you have an analysis, if you have data that you want to give the board, I think that would be appropriate.
I do. So the school is proposed to have a capacity of 825 students. The traffic study that was provided analyzed it based on 750 students. The analysis needs to be, analysis to the board has to show the 96-unit development that's adjacent to the site. It did not. No testimony was provided. It has to analyze the driveway, the JCP&L driveway across the street, that wasn't included. I did an analysis of an 825-student school, and my results were extremely different from the traffic study. My results are that the driveway operation for that kind, that size school would be at a level of service, which is a level of operation, of an F, which is failure. Now, level of service term, for those who aren't familiar, is the traffic engineer's measure of how...
Objection, objection. Has this report been filed with the board at least 10 days before, as were all of the reports from the applicant?
Mr. Horner, that's a valid question. I mean, I'm sure you did a great job. Have you submitted that to Ms. Morris?
Submitted it to Ms. Morris yesterday.
Oh.
When was your report prepared? What's the date on it?
August 17.
When were the traffic counts done?
I didn't do traffic counts. I relied on the traffic counts completed by the applicant.
Mr. Jackson threw you to the board. I think this is a very dangerous road to go down the road. You tried to keep both me and Mr. Liston in place, but I think this testimony is out of place. What my concern is, isn't so much that it's submitted late, it's really in the, you know, it's like an advocate type of analysis. It's, I'm also, you know, as Mr. Liston pointed out, when Mr. Flannery referred to this as an inherently beneficial use, the type of testimony and the importance of a traffic study and traffic counts and things like that go to when the use is not permitted, and the determination is whether the use is appropriate for the site. In this instance, the use is permitted. So the governing body has determined that this type of use belongs here, and what goes with that is the type of traffic that would be, where they go with this type of use. So, you know, I don't know, irrelevant this is to the board's analysis. Now, if we need a different drive aisle, if we need a different turning radius, if we need more parking or anything like that, that's a different story. But to talk about the level of service and et cetera, I just don't know what that has any bearing on a case where the use is permitted.
If I may, can I clarify the internal circulation, if that would be more...
Mr. Stern, if I can, Mr. Vogt wanted to comment on that. Yeah, I just wanted to segue from what John said. It's important to note that the road in question that serves this development, if approved, as well as the 96-unit...
as well as the 96-unit development across the street, is a county road. If the board approves this application, this is going to be reviewed by the Ocean County Engineering Department, and they're going to be reviewing both developments, and if they're not comfortable with, with the accesses, they're going to request changes.
Mr. Vogt, I'd also like you to ask, and I'd like you to, Mr. Horner referred to a, a level of service of F as a failure. Is that an accurate statement? Is there such, is there such a thing in traffic engineering, or in the DOT, or, or any, any kind of traffic studies that, that actually says a trap, a level of F equates with a failure?
Yes.
Well, go ahead. I'll defer to Mr. Horner on that, since this is his expertise.
The answer to your question is yes, that's actually a technical term. Level service F equates to failure when you have delays over a certain level that is considered a failure and is not an acceptable condition. Okay.
So, I, I'm, I'm not going to get into an argument over which traffic expert is correct. Again, Ocean County is going to be looking at this application if approved. If they share the same concerns, chances are they're going to request changes to the, the roadway at a minimum. And I don't know, and this is more your purview, John, whether or not a level of service F is basis for, for a denial. Especially if it's a permitted use.
Yeah, I don't know. I'm, I'm, oh, I don't know what a level of service F means. I've heard different testimony on that, but this is the expert, that's what his testimony is, the board can accept it or not accept it.
Okay, so gentlemen, I want to wrap this up. So, Mr. Horner, do you have anything else you need to add to your testimony?
Well, I have a lot I would like to add, but I can focus on the internal circulation of the site, which I think is very, very deficient and should be considered.
Horner, you've got five minutes. You've got five minutes. Go.
Perhaps if Ms. Morris could put up the site plan, exhibit three, I think it is? With regard to the internal circulation, it all relates really to the number of students and the size and the buses. I understand there's a bus loading zone, it's on there, it, it has a designated area for three buses. I understand that there's four currently used, used by the school, and they have testified that there could be more. I know that, for example, on Friday, when everybody's dismissed at once, that would require approximately 15 buses or more, and I'm assuming 55 students per bus. That could be an overexaggeration, maybe it's 20 buses. The site does not accommodate 20 buses. I'd be welcome to Mr. Flannery explaining how 20 buses can fit on the site without encroaching onto Squonkum Road. Additionally, you see, the, the applicant has indicated there'll be 75 pickup and drop off by parents. There's no accommodation for those vehicles, or justification for where 75 came from as a number for 825 students. The site actually would fit about 15 cars if every aisle was utilized by either buses or vehicles. That's not 75, and that's not more than that, based on 825 students. So there's a lot of concern that this will, will bleed out onto Squonkum Road, and there's been no testimony to indicate that it won't. Furthermore, if you look at the southern driveway, if someone goes in the southern driveway and finds no parking available, and they get to the end by the four spaces, by what, what may end up being a playground, what do they do? What they do is they have to turn around, because there's no exit. The bus loading zone is one way. So there's some internal circulation issues that have not been addressed and fleshed out. I thought it important for the board to be aware, because the county will have no, will not be able to address that, that, that's a site plan issue, so I thought it'd be important to raise. It also requires a left turn lane, but, so I, I don't know whether the applicant was aware of that, because they were traffic, I did not address that either way.
Mr. Horner, did you read Mr. Vogt's report, Board Engineer's report?
Yes, I read the, I read the traffic impact comments in particular, but I did read it, yes.
Which did you call the traffic impact comments in Terry's report?
I think there were two comments, they were basically statements of fact pulling from the applicant's traffic engineer report, which I would submit to you is inadequate for what is represented as an 825-student school.
It evidently was satisfactory for the board engineer, though, wasn't it?
I don't, I don't know, because the report, the traffic study actually says 750 students. I can't speak for the board engineer and what he reviewed and what he did not with regard to the traffic study.
I'd let the board make its own conclusions, look at Roman numeral four, paragraph two, but I'd like to move on, Mr. Chairman, and you asked me a direct question about what could resolve this, and I think we've heard the engineer, whoever he might have been hired by and with the, if we could get to the conclusion, I'm sure everybody would appreciate it.
Okay, so, Mr. Horner, are you, are you wrapped up?
Well, I, I could go into more detail about my report. I'd be happy to, if that's what the board would, would like to hear.
The problem, I, I am going to be mindful of the point, and I'm not castigating you, but when we get something the day before, it's hard to process it. We do have lives, and we do try to read the documents that are given to us, and then we can think about it and ask intelligent questions. So I don't want to do that on the fly at 9:37 at night.
Yeah, just one thing, Chairman, I have not seen this report. I have not reviewed it.
Did you do any cross-examination if you searched this? What's that? Who's saying, who's speaking?
That was Terry, I wanted to put on the record, I have not seen this report, nor have I reviewed it.
That, that, more, more to my point. So, John, if you want to ask one or two questions on cross, I'll allow it. If you don't have anything so relevant, I would appreciate you not asking the questions, but please proceed.
No, I'm fine to move to respond to the chairman's, your question, which I think is properly put, and that is dealing with the Simcoe Hall and the overall resolution on a binary basis, or hopefully something in between.
It's not our place as the board to suggest bridging proposals. I'm just telling you, the way I'm seeing this is that each side is forcing us into a position that we're going to have to vote on something, and candidly, maybe neither of you will be happy with it.
If I might, that's Chairman, but I would think the traffic expert is concluded.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Horner.
Thank you.
The room can be the, I've heard a number of names for this room today, a lunchroom, a cafeteria, a dining room, a ballroom, a wedding hall, a Simcoe Hall. We received objections, including one who said, "We don't want a room whatsoever, no difference, big room, ballroom, weekday or Shabbos." That's a tough position, and that came from Mr. Ouch, whose letter was read before and who is represented by Mr. Liston. The board might say, "Well, what do you propose versus zero?" If, and we got into decorating, whether, where the lights would be. If I understood Mr. Flannery right, the difference between the two floors are basically 11 and a half feet, and the question was asked, "Why not eight feet or nine feet?" Well, it's going to be, if it's the whole floor, the classrooms are going to be that high. That being said, if we had the right that most any user of property would have to decorate their room the way they want to, and that would include, in this case, the lunchroom, dining room, Simcoe Hall, such occupancy by agreement of the applicant would be no more than 200 people. We would leave by 10:30. The board may want to consider that in light of Mr. Flannery's testimony with respect to the number of square feet that are needed and allowed, as well as in connection with the preservation or non-preservation of the 20 spaces. We have a lane, a lane sufficient to plant a single row of arborvitae, which we would do at eight to 10 feet, the board well knows, those are Leyland cypress, meshed together to create a green fence. We would also, if chosen by the neighbors as reasonable, or by the board as mandated, an eight-foot fence around. So, I, I think we've come a long way towards zero versus whatever. But I, I think that would be a fair conclusion.
Thank you, Mr. Doyle. Mr. Liston, I'm going to give you an opportunity to concluding remarks, and then we're going to close this, and we're going to have the board deliberate, and then we're going to vote.
Okay. Well, first of all, as I indicated before, I don't think it's proper for the board to get involved in trying to broker a negotiation between my clients and Mr. Doyle's clients. I thought I made that clear. That's what I think is happening now, and I don't think it's proper. But then there isn't much about this meeting that I do think is proper. The one thing that I did hear, though, that made me really concerned beyond my clients' concerns, is what the traffic engineer had to say. Not about the traffic on Squonkum Road, that's, that's going to be a nightmare, but you'll have to listen to your attorney as to whether you consider that or not. But when he talked about the internal circulation and the problems that are, that are just, on a very cursory look, it's going to be a disaster. It's going to be a disaster with buses, it's going to be a disaster with parents' cars. And I would point out that we have not heard from Mr. Doyle's traffic expert. He didn't testify. I fully expected that he would testify tonight, and he didn't. So, when you get to the traffic issue, the internal traffic issue, I think you've got a terrible plan here. That's going to be a danger to the children who use the school, to the staff. I mean, it's just, I don't know why Mr. Doyle hasn't brought his traffic expert to testify, but I would think before the board makes any decision other than to deny the application, Mr. Doyle want, might want the ability to bring him in so he can testify about his report. Because it doesn't look good, with him not testifying and a, a traffic engineer coming in and indicating on the internal problems that there are a very serious problem.
Mr. Chairman, I know you, I didn't realize that was going to be the closing. I wanted to respond to your question. Let's be clear.
So, Mr. Doyle, then why don't you briefly close, like in the next three minutes?
As to traffic, Mr. Vogt, not anybody's engineer, but yours, bus loading zone is proposed in front of the school. We recommend proposed bus spaces be designated, and the entire aisle be restricted, the one-way circulation in a counterclockwise direction in this manner, any proposed traffic circulation. And that, and point down, propose the one-way bus loading area, and the three proposed bus spaces are going to be to mention. Other than that, we come to you for a use that is ventilated in Lakewood, education, a use that is so central to the community, it is permitted in every zone. A use that does not cover too much of the land and meets the requirements with the exception of the 20 feet on the parking, and we left that to the board. The board will make the wisest decision whether it's needed or not needed. The 35 feet, I think, speaks for itself. It didn't hurt anybody except the school. And I think the board should take into account the importance of that school, the growth of that particular segment of the educational field, and this international network that wants to make more of a home in Lakewood for those people who already live in Lakewood, who want their children, as you heard in the letters, to go to this school in an enlarged fashion. We purposely responded on what seemed to be the underlying current from the objectors in the board. How big is the hall going to be? Is it going to have weddings? Are they going to park on Apollo Road? The numbers, limited to 200, allows the number of parking spaces that would be usable under the board's discretion is enough parking, and everybody should go home happy, and the board will have done, I think legally, factually, the right thing.
Thank you, Mr. Doyle. Okay, John, is it appropriate to close the public comment section, beginning deliberations?
Yes.
How do we do that?
Just ask for a, a motion to the meeting and begin deliberations.
Motion to what?
To close the public portion of the meeting and begin deliberations.
Okay. I'd like to make a mo, can I get a motion to close the public portion of the meeting?
Twelve.
We get a second?
Second by Justin.
Time table, second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any objections? Hearing none. All right, gentlemen, would somebody like to make a motion and bring this all together?
I'm proposing to-
It's time table. Can I make a motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I just emailed Ally of nine items that I would like to make the motion on. To be clear, I, I made a, she can check the email and bring it up on the screen, and I think we can be very clear about the whole situation. One question we did not get addressed from Brian was the separate entrances, but I put it on the motion as well. Ally, did you get my email? Okay, good. She can bring it up, and we can go over it one at a time.
It just came in. Hold on just a minute.
Okay.
Do you want to read those? Or do you want me to read through them?
If you can read it.
You can read it, you're good at this.
Mr. Sables' motion, I assume, to approve with the following conditions. There should be two playgrounds with proper fencing, bollards, and sidewalk and curb in front of parentheses between the parking lot and parentheses, and proper sidewalk leading from the building to these areas. This will also help with bus loading on Fridays. Condition two, no parking in the bus unloading zone. Condition three, head-in parking in the buffer area. Condition four, no rentals after 10:30 PM. Condition five, maximum of 200 people in the rental hall. Condition six, no parking on any school buses on the site during the day and the night. Condition seven, proper fencing around the entire property as required by ordinance. Condition eight, leave the handicap ramp and give the variance. Condition nine, proper separate men and women entrances to the hall with sidewalks.
So I guess the proper thing would be to say it-
I didn't hear you, but-
Mr. Stern, do you want to repeat, repeat your request for a second? For some reason, you were echoing.
Oh, is there a second?
Yeah, through, through the chair, this is Justin. I, I'd like to, I'd like to add just a couple, a couple extra items to make to the motion that Mr. Sable would agree. I'd like to add that there should be an eight-foot thick vinyl fence along the entire perimeter of the property. I, I drove by the site today, and, and there are, there are, there are some trees, small clusters of trees, and also larger trees that are left on the perimeter. I, I'd like to see that the applicant can keep as many of those, as many of those trees as possible. They're basically around the perimeter, and then also plant, plant new trees around the perimeter in accordance with the shade tree commission's recommendation. And then also, I, I would like to recommend to the county, you know, we can't, we can't really enforce this, but I'd like to recommend that the entrance, the northerly, the northerly access to the site, maybe just be a right in and a right out, as opposed to having left and right. But those, those are the items that I'd like to add. Those, those are the items that I'd like to add.
Okay, Mr. Sable, does your motion still stand? In accordance with the amendment made?
Uh, the last item was in, right in, right out of the two centers, the separate entrances?
Of the, the northernmost entrance.
The, the northerly, the northerly access to the site.
So you want to make a right in only? I, I agree with that.
Yeah, uh, yeah, right in, right out. And then that's our recommendation to the county.
How is the bus going to get to, to do a right in, right out if they're coming up from Squankham, uh, from, from Lakewood?
So use the other one.
I missed that. I'm sorry. Yeah, okay.
What's the other one? They can't, they can't go in.
It is a recommendation to the county and we'll leave it up to the county, however, they, however they feel.
Yeah, so, uh, so Chaim, if we can add those items, I'll, I'll second the motion.
Okay, Ally, if you can type it up or I can re, retype it again?
Well, it, so basically, uh, want me to repeat that, Ally?
Uh, no, it'll, it'll be in the minutes.
Yeah, it'll be on the record. It'll be on the record.
Chaim?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
I, I'm not sure how we do this, but can I, an amendment that adds on to what, um, Justin just said?
Yeah, and my motion will be to recommend anything that Mr. Stern recommends into the, uh,
No, thank you so much. Ally, can you pull up Chaim's email one more time, please?
Yes.
Okay, so items number four and five and six for a period of three years shall be specifically enforceable by any property owner. What's the little cul-de-sac called?
Marsh.
March? Marsh?
Marsh.
Mars, like the planet?
Yep.
Yeah. Um, the real issue here is enforcement and I think we all know that if this is not complied with, um, the residents really aren't going to have much of a remedy. So I think there needs to be some teeth to this for a period of time to make sure everybody works together nicely. So that there would be a deed restrictive, something that runs with the land for a period of three years, that any of the neighbors, the four or five neighbors who are adjoining the property could seek specific performance on number four, five and six. It's adjunctive relief, not damages and junk of relief.
What, what is the actual capacity of the hall?
What's that? It's 200 people for the motion.
So it's full, I understand, but what's the actual capacity of that hall?
Uh, I don't think we should go into deliberation now.
Well, I'm just trying to figure out if, if we're, if we're overstocking it, if we're understocking it.
That's the motion. That's the motion.
I think because.
And that was based on Mr. Doyle's recommendation.
For the number of parking spots, 200 people is an acceptable amount of people.
Well, remember, most people are coming two to a car, maybe three.
Mr. Chairman, I, I, I seconded the motion. This is Justin.
Okay. All right. So, um, Chaim, I guess you accepted my amendment and then, uh, Justin has seconded it.
I, I, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I, I, um, yeah, your, your, um, your suggestion, your, your suggested amendment to the motion, I'm, I'm not cleared. A deed restriction for a period of years. I'm not really sure how, how that works. I, I go that way.
Yeah, I'm a little uncomfortable with that. Can I just, um, interject? A deed restriction typically would not, I don't see why you couldn't have it for a period of years, but any neighbor would have the, uh, ability and the authority to seek to enforce any of the restrictions that are in the resolution. So.
On how?
It, it, they could get the resolution and they could bring a writ of mandamus to order the town to enforce the conditions in this resolution. And they could say that they are, uh, you know, being damaged by virtue of the applicant, um, violating the terms of the resolution.
Or direct path.
I'm not as comfortable with it being just for a specific term of years.
Yeah, I mean, John, I, you know, uh, the, the, the board and, and Mr. Chairman, the board is typically, I mean, I don't remember us ever imposing deed restrictions. Deed restrictions are, uh,
No, we never have and everybody gets up and says, "Oh, harm property value, et cetera, et cetera." But I don't want to have to face one of the property owners in the supermarket in two years when their quality of life is destroyed if we're all wrong. If we're all wrong. And I'm not imputing any bad motives to anybody, but there's got to be some mechanism for the homeowners to have a substantive dialogue with the school that's got some teeth to it. Otherwise they can talk to their blue in the face and nothing's going to get resolved. We have to.
By, by putting a deed and only limiting to three years, I don't think that's accomplishing. I, I agree that we have to work something out and therefore per Mr. Doyle's recommendation, we put 200 people, not more than 10:30 at night, not late into 10:30 at night. I'm not sure if three years and putting a deed restriction is going to help with any of these concerns.
So Chaim, how do you, how do you enforce it?
I have, maybe, maybe can we put a, require them to put a security guard or somebody that's going to be enforcing this for the first two years?
Chaim, what if they don't? How do you enforce it? I'm not, you're bad motives people here. I'm just, I'm, I'm reflecting on human nature.
There is a mechanism, just like there is another, any other land use approval. There's a resolution, the zoning officer can enforce it and any neighbor who was not satisfied with that could bring their own action for violating that and they could also bring a writ of mandamus to, uh, compel the town to enforce its resolution if the zoning officer refused to. So there is, there is a, a, a means to enforce it.
I'm just trying to be realistic, John. The, the zoning officer is not going to enforce anything.
That's the point.
I'm not casting suggestions on the zoning officer either. I'm just trying to be realistic.
And we've been having this concern on, on, on most of the applications that we do.
Yes, we have and we've never taken this step and I, that's why I'm saying, make it two years. I don't care. But I'm trying to give the homeowners a, a tool to get the attention of the school if things get out of control. If somebody has a better idea, I'm open to suggestions.
Mr. Chairman, respectfully, this is Justin. I don't think imposing deed restrictions is a good idea. Um, and, uh, we, I, my time on the board, we've never done this to any institution, whether it be a school, a synagogue, a residential development, commercial development. I, I just think it's a bad thing to get into and, uh, pick arbitrary numbers, two years, three years, one year. Um, and also respectfully, I, I think the zoning office in Lakewood is capable of enforcing this and, uh, if they get, if they get calls and, and they, and they, and they have, um, they have complaints on the record, it's their legal duty to enforce it and to, and to say that the zoning office is not going to do it, I, 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 I disagree with that. If they have something on the record and if there's, and if there's a, a blatant violation, I believe they will, I, I believe they will enforce it if people complain. So I, you know.
Gentlemen, I defer to the majority and the wisdom of my colleagues. I withdraw the motion. So I think we have a motion on the table that's been seconded by Mr. Flanspom.
Mr. Justin, Justin, a timetable. Can I add to your request to the county? If we can request, uh, a crosswalk from Whispering Pine across Squankham, you think that's a good, because a lot of the applicants, not applicants, people that wrote public comments was in, in, in the positive from Whispering Pines from across the street that's walking to the Simcoe Hall and schools, you think that's a good idea?
I, 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 I would be careful about a crosswalk in the middle of Squankham Road without, without some sort of tru, uh, signalized, uh, intersection there without some sort of traffic, like real traffic control. I just, I, I, I don't know. I think, I think that might be, could be more dangerous than, uh,
Yeah, that's a vital.
I think.
I don't know.
Excuse me, Chairman. That goes back to Ocean County.
Yeah, and that's really going to go back to Ocean County. I just, I, I, I feel comfortable with a crosswalk across Squankham Road in that, in that location. I, I hear what you're saying, but in that location, I feel uncomfortable. I, I don't know.
Okay, so we'll put in that recommend, in the request, Ocean County, some sort of safer pedestrian crossway.
Well, I think I maybe, maybe we can make a recommendation that they take a look at something and if they, you know, if they disagree and, you know, they don't.
Very good. Just in a second.
Okay. All right, Ally, are you clear what the motion is?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, then, and, uh, please.
I think we had a breakup from.
Make a roll call?
I'm going to take a roll. Thank you. Mr. Garfield. Mr. Garfield. Hold on, I might have muted him at one point. Uh, I see it. Hold on. I'm sorry, Mr. Garfield.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Stern.
Yes.
Mr. Sable.
Yes.
Mr. Flanspom.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
And Mr. Raisik.
Come here. Come from here.
Mr. Raisik.
One second.
Hold on, we have two Hines on, so he should be there.
Yeah.
I didn't hear who voted so far. I didn't hear the votes so far.
Mr. Raisik, it was all yeses.
All right, yes.
Thank you.
I'm out of the door.
Before everyone, we do have minutes for approval, please. Um, I'm sorry, yes, Mr. Garfield.
Uh, just a, a point with the, uh, county transportation. I wouldn't ask them just to look into it. I would tell them what you're looking for. They're much more, uh, listening, I'll say, when you tell them what you, really that you want.
Right. Okay.
I know them.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so can I get a motion to approve the minutes? We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Minister Carey, anything else?
That's it. Thank you, everyone.
Okay, motion to adjourn. All in favor say aye. The ayes have aye.
Aye.
Team.
Good night, everybody.